Well, hello, everybody. It's good to see you all again. And colleagues, it's good to see you all. We are calling this meeting to order at 7:00 P. M. And if you will, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we'll pass it over to Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand to salute the flag and say the pledge.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good evening, Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Mayor Pretent Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
And Councilmember Rist.
Here.
Awesome, thank you. We have a few ceremonial items tonight, and we will start with Welcoming Week, a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Callerest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to welcome up Nio and any other folks you'd like to join. Great. Thank you. So, so in 1957, my father, Carson Albert Rist, hopped on a freighter in Bremen, West Germany, bound for the United States. He landed in Norfolk, Virginia. From there, he got on a bus, a Greyhound bus. Two weeks later, two days later, he arrives in the Colorado Rockies, middle of the Rockies, in a small town named Leadville, Colorado. And thus began his American dream. My family is eternally grateful to the citizens of Leadville and his colleagues at the climax of a living in mind where he worked for embracing him fully as an American and for welcoming him in this country. And for that reason, I have great joy in reading this proclamation this evening. So, thank you for joining me. Whereas Welcoming Week was launched in 2012 by Welcoming America as an annual campaign in celebration to showcase the movement of communities striving to be more welcoming places for all, including immigrants. And whereas U.S. Census data reflects that 14.7% of the city of Durham's population is foreign-born compared to 13.5% of the nation's population being foreign-born. Welcoming Week provides individuals and communities the opportunity to proclaim and exercise their welcoming values through events and initiatives that build stronger relationships between native-born and foreign-born residents. And whereas the city of Durham strives to be a welcoming, diverse, and innovative community that prioritizes racial equity and ensures that those who have been historically excluded from decision-making have voices. And whereas the city of Durham aims to strengthen its foundation and improve the quality of life for all residents through its commitment to foster communities that are connected, engaged, and diverse. Now therefore I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2024, as Welcoming Week 2024 in Durham and recommend its observance to all citizens. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 16th day of September, 2024. Actually, I also want to say one thing. So, I also had the great joy last Saturday of going to the first event in Welcoming Week, which was the International Soccer Tournament, which was a lot of fun in Herndon Park. Nio not only helped to organize that, but was also a participant in the soccer game. So, Nio's got some mad skills. There were a lot of good players there. I have to give props to the team from Bull City Futsal Academy that won the trophy. So, a great event. Thank you for organizing, as well as you and your colleagues at the Cooperative Extension and also DPR. So, it was a great event on Saturday, so.
Good evening. My name's Jenny Bell. I'm a Community Engagement Strategist with Neighborhood Improvement Services, and this is the third year that I have had the pleasure to be in front of you to accept this proclamation for Welcoming Week. We did have a first event, the Bull City Soccer Tournament, that was hugely successful. And I also want to invite the entire Durham community. Tomorrow, we have an Immigrant and Refugee Career and Resource Fair that's coming up from 10:00 to 6:00 P. M. at the Church World Services offices just around the corner. Church World Services is another great partner who couldn't be with us tonight. And I see another colleague who helped organize is coming up as well. So, I hope that the whole Durham community can be there so that we can continue these events each year to make this place that Durham, no matter where you come from, you belong here. Thank you.
Nio?
I'll pass it to my colleague, Nio.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I just want to say that Durham is becoming a blueprint of inclusion and integration. And this, thanks to the City Council, the Durham community, and the Durham Board of Commissioners. So, I would like to appreciate you all for the work you're doing and providing this opportunity for immigrants and refugees to call Durham home. Thank you so much.
Well, we, I just wanted to explain a little bit of what is going to happen tomorrow. We are very excited to provide this opportunity to immigrants and refugees in the city. What we're going to offer, Job, Career, and Resource Fair. And the goal with this is to help these communities basically to better understand how to apply for jobs here in the United States. As an immigrant myself, I found very difficult at the beginning to better understand how everything works. So, based on that, I decided to promote this activity, and I hope that with this, all the community feel more empowered and strong in the sense of going outside and get some jobs. So, this time, we have the opportunity to collaborate with the county as well. So, that also embraced this idea of working together to do better things for the community. So, we hope that we have a really good amount of people going, and we thank you for that.
Good evening, everyone. I will be reading the National Adult Literacy Week proclamation, and I'd love if Lizzie Ellis-Furlong from the Durham Literacy Center could join me. You're welcome. Whereas more than 43 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level while 62.7 million lack basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in a post-secondary education. And whereas every year, 1 in 3 young adults drops out of high school. American Action Forum estimates that America is short in estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels. Adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career and college. And whereas adult education programs in high schools and adult schools, community colleges and community centers offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill set of our citizens. And whereas our city of Durham, North Carolina, celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week as proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their adult education options to attain their professional and personal goals. Now therefore I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 16th through 20, 2024, as Adult Literacy Week in Durham and recommend its observance to all citizens. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this 19th day of September, 2024. And if you would like to say some words. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Javier. And thank you so much to the City Council and the mayor for making this Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. We are part of, the Durham Literacy Center is a local, community-based organization that provides tutoring and instruction for adults who are improving their literacy skills, working on their GED diplomas, and improving their English language skills and digital literacy skills. So, as we all know, that the ability to read and write and the ability to speak English is extremely important to navigate everything in this culture and economy. And so, we are here doing the best that we can to help as many Durham residents to improve their skills with the help of a couple hundred volunteers. So, we are just really grateful to you all for acknowledging this so that we can elevate the issue that we work on. About 1 in 5 Durham residents struggle with literacy, and that means that they read approximately below a 6th grade reading level. And so, we're very proud of the work that we do to help adults and actually out-of-school youth, I failed to mention that, working on their GED diplomas. So, we'll be doing several events over the course of the week, but the fun one will be a book giveaway at the Durham Literacy Center on Wednesday from 11:00 to 1:00 P. And we just want to promote reading and literacy to everyone in the community, whether they're folks in the neighborhood where the Literacy Center resides, across the street from the Lakewood Shopping Center, or anyone in the community. And I was also really happy to also see the Welcome Week proclamation. We partner with many of the area providers, and we serve several hundred students in our adult ESOL program. So, it's great to see partners being elevated and acknowledged here. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone in chamber and watching on whatever platform you may be watching. Like Councilmember Rist, this proclamation has a pretty personal meaning for me as well. And I want to thank His Honor, the mayor, for issuing this proclamation and allowing me to read this proclamation tonight for World Alzheimer's and Dementia Awareness Day. And I'm going to ask Susan Sewell of Dementia Inclusive, Inc. to please come join me. While she's coming to join me, His Honor dropped by my office for a little while. I had the opportunity to just reminisce a little bit. He already knew, but just reminisce a little bit. In November of 2015, I was preparing to take a trip with a delegation from the, I wasn't in office yet, a delegation from the city to go to Boston. And my mom had been battling dementia for a couple of years. So, for a couple of years, I watched this beautiful, brilliant, powerful woman that had poured everything that she had into my brothers and my sister, and I changed. And we spent a couple of years saying goodbye to her before ultimately saying goodbye again. And I know that I am in league with millions of families around our country and thousands here in Durham who have felt this particular journey, walked this particular journey in dealing with this disease. So, I'm very, very pleased to read this proclamation tonight and to present it to Ms. Sewell, and then I'll ask you to have some words after I do. Proclamation. Whereas September 21st is World Alzheimer's Day, and this year's theme is Time to Act on Dementia, Time to Act on Alzheimer's. And challenges the perception, many people, including healthcare professionals, still hold that dementia is a normal part of aging. And whereas dementia is a syndrome characterized by a decline in memory and thinking that affects behavior and the ability to perform everyday activities, Alzheimer's is the most common cause of dementia. Dementia is the seventh-leading cause of death worldwide and sixth-leading cause for North Carolina. And whereas evidence suggests that when people with dementia and their families are well-prepared and supported, shock, anger, and grief are balanced by reassurance and empowerment. Durham supports the vision of a dementia-inclusive community where all persons with dementia are valued and fully supported in their pursuit of quality of life and well-being. And whereas Durham invites you to join in partnerships, collaborations, and advocacy efforts to promote well-being, inclusion, and health equity for persons with dementia. Now therefore I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 21st as World Alzheimer's and Dementia Awareness Day in Durham and recommend its observance to all citizens. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this, the 16th day of September, 2024. Leonardo Williams, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, and welcome neighbors. My name is Susan Sewell, and I'm a board member of Dementia Inclusive, Inc. We aim to build a community culture of well-being, inclusion, health equity, and hope for persons at risk of or living with dementia and their care partners in Durham County. Creating this type of culture will require all of us coming together. Thank you for participating in World Alzheimer's Day with this proclamation. I believe it's our third year. That's great. Dementia Inclusive, Inc. participates in World Alzheimer's Day by holding a forum each September. We hear presentations and meet in small groups to seek connections amongst people and organizations addressing dementia needs in Durham County. In last year's forum, I heard a heart team member ask, "How can we connect folks to DSS once the crisis they are called on has been addressed?" But they're concerned that there are long-term responses needed here. An EMT member got up and spoke that they had folks licensed to do home assessments that could lead to connections with DSS. Connections were made. Presentations from last year's forum are on our website, dementiainclusiveinc.org. This year's forum is on September 20th, that's this Friday, there's still room, at the Durham Convention Center, echoing this year's international theme, Time to Act on Dementia, Time to Act on Alzheimer's. Our keynote speaker is Dr. Goldie Smith Byrd from the Social Sciences and Health Policy and of, at Wake Forest School of Medicine, and she is also an Alzheimer specialist. We, we sent the commissioners at the City Council an invitation, and we hope that you can join us. There is still room. Anyone can find out more information on our website, dementiainclusiveinc.org. Dementia Inclusive is working with Aging Well Durham to continue connecting sectors to respond to the needs of those living with dementia. DSS is now gathering information with their health assessments about dementia, whereas they had not been asking those questions before. We've made more connections here, too. Finally, I am more aware each year that services and accommodations needed for those living with dementia, things like bigger letters on signs, training customer contact folks to be patient, and maybe rephrasing their questions without jargon. They make the community, our community, more accessible for all of us. Thank you.
I'll be reading a proclamation about one of my favorite events throughout the year, where I ambitiously tried to make every site in the city. And also dodging a speeding ticket from trying to do that, so. Sort of locked in now. I'll be reading a proclamation about National Night Out, something that we all know about in the city of Durham. Whereas National Night Out, or short NNO, in Durham will take place on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. And whereas the city of Durham will observe the 41st Annual National Night Out, joining forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas Durham residents are committed to promoting and achieving NNO's public safety ideals, as more than 50 neighborhoods and community groups have registered with the Durham Police Department this year to observe National Night Out. And whereas National Night Out is sponsored annually by the National Association of Town Watch, spearheaded locally by the City of Durham Police Department, and formerly championed this year by the City of Durham Fire Department, Neighborhood Improvement Services, the Durham County Sheriff's Office, and the Durham Housing Authority. And whereas National Night Out is supported by the active participation and in-kind services of Durham residents, City of Durham departments, community agencies, and businesses who are committed to the city's mission to provide an excellent, equitable, and sustainable quality of life. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the city of Durham come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. So, now therefore I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 1st, 2024, as National Night Out in Durham and call upon all residents of the city of Durham to join in support of the Durham Police Department. So, witness my hand, this 16th day of September, 2024.
Well, oh my goodness. Well, thank you so very much, Mr. Mayor, Council, and our community. We really do look forward to celebrating National Night Out every year, to the point that we decided to move it to October so we could all really enjoy it without dying in the thousand-degree heat. You know, this year, really more than so many years past is important for all of us to get out and get to know each other and really listen to each other and embrace each other as one community. National Night Out helps us do that and helps us kick it off and, you know, say no to violence and crime and criminals in our great community. So, again, National Night Out, in case you don't know, it's the first Tuesday in October, so it's October the 1st. We have 52 sites signed up this year, and the Durham Police Department headquarters will be the location for one of the larger sites. And so, we invite and encourage you all to come out and then branch out to your various neighborhoods. If you are a neighborhood that is going to be hosting a site, I do really like, would like to see you branch out to others that may not be able to have the resources to celebrate National Night Out and invite them into your neighborhood and become one with them. So, thank you very, very much for this proclamation. Thank you.
All right. We are back before the council. Colleagues, any opening announcements? Councilmember Cook?
I'll just be really brief. I just wanted to say thank you. I see that we have a big crowd in the hall today, so thank you for everyone coming out to watch these meetings. Thanks to folks online. I, and I just want to extend an extra thank you to folks who have reached out to me. It's been a difficult time, and I appreciate your patience. So, that is all. Thanks for being here and looking forward to a good meeting.
Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and apologize. I have lots of announcements this evening. Some of them are celebratory, and then some of them are on certain events that we have been seeing in North Carolina and across the country. So, I just wanted to shout out the Pauli Marie Center for having an incredible grand opening, not this weekend, but the weekend before. It was amazing to see so many community members out there. It was a beautiful day. And then I also just want to shout out city and county staff for Welcoming Week. I think it's going to weave into what I'll be speaking about next. So, this last week, last two weeks, as we're all aware, we have seen some really intense and hateful rhetoric against immigrants. And currently in North Carolina, we just passed our General Assembly, obviously, certain members are leaning a certain way there, around HB 10. So, it was, many bad things were in this bill, and I think a lot of us have been reading about the private school vouchers and other pieces. But the part that has been particularly harmful to our immigrant community is this bill will force sheriffs to work with ICE, with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Right now, that choice is left up to sheriffs. It's a bill that has gone back and forth since at least 2018 and now has passed our General Assembly. Governor Cooper is expected to veto if he hasn't already, and there is an expectation that will be overridden. It is Hispanic Heritage Month. It is also, I think, a week where we have seen some really vicious targeting against, in particular this time, before it's been Mexicans, we can all name, there's been anti-Muslim rhetoric. And so, I want to talk about Hispanic Heritage Month. In a lot of ways, it's changing to Latino versus Hispanic. Hispanic includes Spain. That's the difference. Hispanic means you're a Spanish speaker. Latino means you're south of the border. So, it encompasses anyone regardless of what your language is. It includes Brazil, it includes Haiti, it includes Belize. It's not that your history is about being colonized by Spain. It's that your history is that you were colonized by a European power and that shared experience. And so, Hispanic Heritage Month starts when it does because there's a lot of countries in Latin America that celebrate their Independence Day, including my home country, Chile, which is September 18th. And the reason I think about Haiti in this moment is that had Haiti not been brave enough to be the second country in, on our hemisphere to overthrow the yoke of colonization and slavery, none of the other countries would have then followed that fervor. And many of the countries that came after the Haitian Revolution banned slavery in their constitutions. What Haiti stood up and did changed the world. And so, it's not lost on me that we are targeting a country that has been given a terrible hand by the French still, how they've been treated, and that they're being targeted again, because that's been their story since the day that they decided to throw the chains of slavery off their country and chart a different future. And so, on this Hispanic Heritage, during this month of celebration, I also just want to think about that, that history, what it means, and what we all benefit from because of that bravery that happened many centuries ago. So. Felices fiestas patrias a todos los países que están celebrando. Feliz mes de hispano de herencia hispana. Estoy con mi comunidad inmigrante, mi comunidad latina siempre están en mi corazón. Siempre voy a luchar para ustedes. And I am so grateful that Durham will always stand up to be a welcoming community, and it just meant so much that we read that proclamation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Caballero for sharing and making sure that we all understand and on the same page about how welcoming our community is and how we will continue to support our immigrant and refugee community. I did want to just share as well the town hall meetings that we'll be having for September and October coming up. It's been a couple of shifts and just acknowledging for October, I'm sorry, September 26, the doors will open at 6:00, and it'll start at 7:00 at, instead of Edison Johnson, it'll be at Wall Town to allow some previously scheduled programming to continue there. And then for the October 24th Town Hall Meeting, we have yet to decide a location, and so I do want to just ask folks to bear with us in trying to figure out, I'm trying to find someplace a little bit further south. We tend to do it in central Durham a lot, and so I just want to try and find a little And so I just want to try and find a location that's south. And in the next two cycles, or the next two Town Halls, we'll try to focus on Finance, General Services, Public Works, Solid Waste, and Waste Water Management. And then follow-up will be on Emergency Communications, Emergency Management, Fire and Police. I think I got it straight this time. And outside of that, I am not going to add a lot of ad lib because there's so many things to say. My weeks have been a little bit tense at home and just in all of the news. I think just making sure that folks remember to take care of theirselves, their self-care and their mental health is important. Making sure that you're putting your mask on first, and then just making sure folks know with all the flooding, please do not drive through the puddles of water. Go a different route. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a couple of announcements from the last week. The first thing is, actually, it wasn't planned this way, but actually concurrent with Hispanic Heritage Month, I visited El Centro Hispano just this last Tuesday. I want to thank Pilar and her staff there for welcoming me in their agency. El Centro is the largest and longest-serving Latina organization in the state, so we have much to be proud of on the work they're doing. They have a legacy of serving Latinos and others in the areas of education, economic development, community health, community support, and civic participation. So kudos to El Centro Hispano, certainly one of our key nonprofit players in the city of Durham. And then earlier on Tuesday, I had the opportunity to join in the breakfast that Housing for New Hope held, and the mayor was there to provide opening comments to talk about a model initiative called, among a coalition of agencies in Durham, called the Unlocking Doors Initiative, which expands housing opportunities for folks in Durham through active participation and active partnerships with landlords. So they're always seeking fair market rent units in Durham to support their efforts. So if you have one, please reach out to Housing for New Hope to be part of their Unlocking Doors Initiative. The last thing to say is a shout out to Wanda. It was great seeing Wanda recognized on the field at Durham, at Saturday's Durham Day football game between Duke and UConn to honor her many, many years of service in the city of Durham. It was great to see you out there on the field. Thank you for your service, and we look forward to your continued work with the city for these last several months. So thanks, Wanda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening again, and good evening, colleagues. I want to associate myself with everything that's been said tonight. These excellent remarks and announcements. Very quickly, I want to send a shout out and congratulations to the Alpha Epsilon Omega Chapter of Iota V Theta Fraternity Incorporated. I was at their 25th Gala last night. It was held in Raleigh, but a number of Durham residents and citizens got awards from the fraternity. So I want to congratulate them and wish them a happy anniversary. Mr. Mayor, tonight I want to add my voice to elected officials all over this country in the utter renunciation of political violence. Yesterday, once again, we learned what appears to be an assassination attempt against a former president of this country. This is Durham. We go at it in Durham. There's probably no city in America that has a more vibrant civic culture. We love hard, we argue hard, but we don't harm each other. This city is about very much engaging vibrantly and vigorously. But we don't engage in political violence in Durham, and we don't support violence in Durham. We fight with ideas. We fight with passion, but with ideas. So on tonight, we want to, again, just reaffirm our values. We're pleased that No Harm came to the former president, and we don't want this to affect anyone in our public square. So we want to associate ourselves with all people of goodwill and elected officials around the country who double down on our renouncing of any type of political violence. I also want to hold space tonight for our most recent victim of gunfire in our city, and to that family who has an empty seat in their home tonight. We continue to recognize that as great as our city is, that there will always be an asterisk next to our celebrations as long as this plague of gunfire continues to echo in our streets. And I want to send our condolences out to the most recent family that had a victim, a family member succumb to gunfire. Finally, on a celebratory note, Mr. Mayor, I want to welcome you back. You've been traveling quite a bit and doing a bunch of stuff around the country. You won't do it, but I do want to, on behalf of the entire city, congratulate you on your appearance on a national stage during the Democratic National Convention. This is not a partisan shout-out. If you had spoken at the other convention, I'd still be congratulating you. It is a huge stage. It's a good look for the city. And would you please accept, on behalf of the entire city, our congratulations for representing Durham so well? Thank you. I yield.
Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues. It is good to be back. And for the record, I would not speak at the other convention. But, you know, the event that I was at, yes, it was a partisan event, but I think that it, when you're speaking to 100 million people across this world and 21,000 in the room, and you get to say, "Helling from the Tar Heel State, home of Duke University, North Carolina Central University, I am the mayor of Durham, North Carolina," that was a moment of pride. And I did that for Durham. And it meant so much, so much. And I just, I appreciate that. Thank you. I have been gone quite a bit, folks. The last meeting that I was at was the meeting that I received that text message of an invite and a phone call the next day. And I had not planned to be gone that long. But as I flipped my phone over here, I said, "Madam Manager, I think I may be gone next meeting." Yeah, so it's good to be back home. However, I, not only was I in Chicago for the DNC, I've been traveling a lot on behalf of Durham. Many of you know that my background is in education, and I am on a mission to reform early childhood education and how we can support it from a municipal standpoint. And I'm grateful to the Hunt Institute for inviting me to be a part of a summit where we were surrounded by industry experts in the early childhood education industry and how we can just reimagine how we can support our youth. And many of you know that that is something personal to me. So I spent the weekend with policymakers and industry experts across the country working on that in Las Vegas. And really excited to celebrate the win for NCCU against Alabama State in the Orange Blossom Classic. I took a weekend off to go down there and support our university and my alma mater. And that was a great win. Also, got a chance to address Latin American presidents and mayors in Puerto Rico about how we are utilizing data in Durham to make government more transparent, our data dashboards, and just how we use data in general. And that was a pretty cool experience as well. And we just recently had a board meeting in Boone, North Carolina, where I was joined, I joined Mayor Protem there as he serves as the state president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And we had a really in-depth policy session. And I'm excited that one of the things I hope to provide as a statewide policy is that our General Assembly will get in the game and assist with affordable housing. And hopefully, they'll consider a policy that, and this is not, you know, concrete yet, but hopefully, you know, mirroring what, you know, LITC, you know, tax incentives, tax credits look like to assist us at the local level with, you know, really addressing the affordable housing crisis that we have, the housing crisis in general. Also, today, I actually participated in providing a proclamation to celebrate the Guatemalan Independence Day, Independence of 203 years. And we did that right before council tonight, and that was a celebration. I'm a little sad that I did not get a chance to taste the rum. I had to rush out and get here, but that was a celebration, and congratulations to them. There has been some things happening, you know, a little gunfire, you know? And again, this is not something I want normalized. I want us to always remain sensitive to when a life in this community, despite how it happened, a life is taken away from us. And I'm going to speak that every time it happens. Because I don't want us to become numb to it. There are some other factors, other matters we're working on that I look forward to speaking on regarding just the downtown corridor and just some things we're working on. So I look forward to bringing those up. I wanted to acknowledge the participants who are here tonight in our neighborhood college. Could you please stand? Let's give them a round of applause. So these folks were brave enough to sign up, take a class or a program, rather, to learn all about just how their local government works. And what it, just taking advantage of these resources to become better and stronger and more engaged, our community members, to help make our community better. So I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you to come up here so you can take a picture with, oh, she just took a big sigh. Come on up here. I would love to take a picture with you all. You can stand right in front of the dais. Right here. Thank you all for being committed to making Durham better. All right. Say cheese on three. The photographer is my former student, by the way. Southern High School. Thank you all so much. And also, this is totally unexpected to them, but once a year, a professor at Duke breathes students. And they are here, and the professor just stepped out. So students from Duke, could you all please stand and be recognized? Thank you all for coming and taking notes and being engaged in your local government. Thank you all. I feel like I've seen some of you all on campus, just walking around. I don't know if you've been in Zwilli's Cafe or not, but I've seen some of your faces when I'm over there. And also, I'm officially a Duke dad, so I'm on campus sometimes now with my son. Oh, there you go, Professor. All right. So yeah, it's great to be back. It's been a lot. And folks, just for the record, you know, Durham is on the scene. Durham is on the map. As a matter of fact, I want to be petty for just a moment. The Department of Transportation had Raleigh on their display of where their investments were. And then it was switched. And now when you look at that display, it has Durham up there. We are receiving so many investments, and that is not by chance. That is through relationships, that is building those relationships, engaging with the Secretary of Transportation and their departments, and on the federal level, just engaging with them. You could apply, it's like a cold call, but when you have relationships and you put a face with the application, it matters. And the triangle is beaming bright, folks. It's beaming very bright. As a matter of fact, we are, if you include the S-line, the triangle has seen nearly $1.3 billion of investment since November. So we're doing something right, all right? And we are going to receive funding for some, out of my office, we're receiving funding for African-American Mayors Association to do some financial literacy courses for our community members. That's supported by a national foundation. And there are some other resources that are coming. Just as today, a digital equity Town Hall that was hosted at NCCU. They received 4.3, I believe, no, I'm sorry, $2.9 million. $2.9 million from the federal government. We supplemented that with nearly, I believe, $493,000, so nearly a half million dollars, to ensure that the folks in this community, the kids in this community have access to just digital equity. So we are getting investments, we are doing it right, and we are making Durham stronger. And that message is for everyone who had a problem with me not being in town. So we got to build relationships, and we're going to bring investments to Durham and we're going to bring resources. And the city is ran by an illustrious manager who's doing an amazing job. And people keep reminding me of when she's leaving. I need you to stop. All right, so let's get to business here. We have a fairly dense agenda tonight. And we, colleagues, at the appropriate time, we will have a special hearing tonight, and I'll provide instructions when we get there. At this time, I am going to acknowledge the city manager for any priority items.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the Durham City Council. I have two priority items for you this evening. The first item is Agenda Item Number 20. It is the Award of Bid Term Contract for Bulk Water Treatment Plant Chemicals to Charis LLC. This item is being referred back to the Water Management Department. And finally, I have Item Number 31, U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program Grant Offer It is a supplemental item that has been added to your agenda.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I always love when grant and offer is in the same sentence. All right, I'll now pass it over to Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton. It's good to see you and members of the city council. It's good to be with you as well. The city attorney's office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of city council. City Clerk's office has no priority items.
Thank you. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda. Item Number 1, Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Appointment. Number 2, Durham City Council Environmental Affairs Board Appointment. Number 3, Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee Appointments. Number 4, Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners Appointment. Number 5, Contract with Cricket Forge to Create Historic Neighborhood Signs. Number 6, Fiscal Year 24 Logic Compensation Group Classification and Compensation Study Final Report. Number 7, Contract BR-11D Bridge Engineering Services for NBI Structures 2024. Number 8, Utility Preliminary Engineering and Construction Agreement for Cornwallis Road P5717. Number 9, Amendment Number 3 to Carpenter Fletcher Road Improvements Preliminary Engineering Agreement, CSXT DOT Number 845869S. Number 10, Utility Extension Agreement with Welcome Venture Park LLC to Serve the Welcome Venture Park Phase 2. Number 11, Amendment to Contract with Securance LLC for Security Operations Center for Managed Services. Number 12, First Amendment to the Contract with Exxon Enterprise, Axon Enterprise Incorporated to Increase Digital Evidence Storage Capacity for Durham Police Department. Number 13, Amendment Number 2 to Supplemental Agreement Number 2 with WSP USA Incorporated for Transit Asset and Compliance Management Services. Number 14, Interlocal Agreement with Durham Public Schools Traffic Signal Design for Proposed Durham School of the Arts. Number 15, Supplemental Agreement for Design of Bicycle Facilities 2, this is tip Number BL00-0028 with MEAD and Hunt Incorporated. Number 16, Purchase of 7 Replacement Light Transit Vehicles for Go-Durham Access. Number 17, Tar River Land Conservancy Mount Harmony Tracked Watershed Protection Project. Authorization to fund. Number 18, Award of Bid Term Contract for Bulk Water Treatment Plant Chemicals to Bryntag Mid-South Incorporated. Number 19, Professional Services Contract Award to Smith Gardner Incorporated for Municipal Landfill Monitoring and Design Services. Number 20, Award of Bid Term Contract for Bulk Water Treatment Plant Chemicals to Charis LLC. This is the item that's been referred back, correct?
Yes.
Number 21, Award of Bid Term Contract for Bulk Water Treatment Plant Chemicals to Penko Incorporated. Number 21, Award of Bid Term Contract for Bulk Water Treatment Plant Chemicals to PenCo Incorporated. Item Number 22, Award of Bid Term Contract for Bulk Water Treatment Plant Chemicals to Univar Solutions USA Incorporated. Under General Business Agenda, our public hearings. Number 27, Consolidated Item Lyons Farm Elementary School Major Special Use Permit Transportation, Special Use Permit and Major Site Plan. Number 28, Consolidation Annexation 5802 South Miami Boulevard Multifamily. Number 29, Consolidated Annexation Hurley Road. Number 30, Consolidated Annexation Farrington Road Multifamily. Under supplemental items, U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Airport Improvement Program Grant Offer, which was referenced earlier. That is our consent agenda for tonight. All right, that is our consent agenda. I'll now entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of Item Number 20.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, Item 4 was requested to be pulled as well.
Oh, there was, yes, I'm sorry, there were cards. Colleagues, Number 4 was pulled by the public. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item Number 4 and Item Number 20, Items Number 4 and 20.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. We will now begin with Item Number 4. I have this, no, that's not right. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm a little out of order. I have to remember how to do this thing here. So considering it's in order, we'll just go ahead to it. It's only 2 cards. Item Number 4, Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners Appointment was pulled, and I have 2 speakers. Oh. Ms. Lyons? Hey, Mom? Oh, yeah, just come right over here. I got you. And it's good to see you again, taking me back to the...
How's everyone this evening?
So you're good. We...
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I haven't done this in a while. I just need to, I want to speak about the resident council, the resident being placed on the board. I have some things I need to ask of that person. Please excuse my appearance. I had a bad accident last month. I have grandma seizures in my sleep sometime at night. The last couple of months I've had is because I haven't been accommodated by Durham Housing Authority. I've stayed in public housing for 30 years by choice. My children are my life, Naisha Lyons and the K. Lyons. My daughter has been with me in housing in the Duguiters. I was the president, vice president. I participate in every program DHA has ever offered. FSS... Sorry. FSS Program, Re Scholarship, um... Re Scholarship, Good Works, Self-Help, First, Second, and Third, even the Fourth Home Ownership Program, Turnkey. I had a house until I fell sick. I used to work for the City of Durham. I was having seizures, and they laid me off. Then Durham Housing Authority came for my house. I was the leader of that community, and so were my children. I went before the former mayor, Bill Bell, and told that man, because I used to stand in front of him all the time, and told him we needed money for the kids in the community. So I got that recreation center that the people owned in that neighborhood under Ms. Atwater and Atwater. And I know everybody in here, just about everybody in know who that woman was. I spoke before the mayor. He gave us the money to open that wreck. I was working for Durham Parks and Rec under threat of being fired to get that wreck open, because those kids used to come to my house and drop their bikes. But I went and got the money for that wreck from the mayor so they can open it. The only problem I had was they painted it ugly color orange. That was it. But it worked. I was in that community for 10 years. I went and got a food bank open. I participated in everything. I served DHA. When the news came, they wanted me. I am a graduate from NCCU. I am a positive, educated resident of Durham Housing Authority. The manager that we have in Cornwallis right now, this young lady, was in charge of the program, the ERAP, that paid for all the back rent and the problems we had during COVID. Ms. Mangum, this young lady is the manager in Cornwallis right now. It's unfair. I am well-read and educated. This woman has broken the First, the Fourth, and the Fifteenth Amendment, the Ku Klux Klan Law. She's threatening people, got people scared. I will stand up for myself. My dad taught me when I was 6 years old, this man was born in 1924, fought World War II and survived the Depression. He raised his 4 children. Do you understand? It told us that when he was younger, this racist white man told him, if you want to hide something from a Negro, put it in a book. I've been reading since I was 6 and finished a dictionary in 2 summers.
Thank you.
I felt and hurt myself. I asked that woman to accommodate me. She talked to me like I wasn't nothing. Do you know people in public housing, sometimes they treat us that we are less than air? And I mean that, sometimes we have to sit without air and wait on maintenance. And everybody is talking about all this money that they receive in the name of housing.
Ms. Lyons.
I'm sorry, I got one more thing to say, sir, please. Because Durham is great. We're flourishing. We're better than Raleigh. This woman breaking the law. She got old people scared.
Ms. Lyons, what I'm doing is...
I know it's a positive day, and I appreciate all that, but all I'm asking from our new person on the board with DHA is that they just called for accounting. It's been 3 years. I have all my proof and all my documentation, but what they count on is that people like us are downtrodden.
Ms. Lyons.
And that we don't have anything.
I'm not silent for you. I want you to get your informa...
I got everything.
Oh, there she is.
3 years, 4 managers, and they won't give me an answer, but they put something on my door.
My staff is going to work with you directly. Just, they're waiting for you in the corner over there. It's gonna be okay.
My daughter has something to say, because this baby been taking care of me since I was 8. Thank you so much, sir.
You got it. It's good to see you again. Naisha. Derek. You there? You have 3 minutes.
Okay, that's fine. I won't eat all that. Good evening, everybody. My name is Naisha Lyons. I grew up in Matt Duguiters. My mom was the president. And all I'm asking for, honestly, is for these resources that I've been hearing in the room, that you guys come out into the community and actually let the residents know that, hey, we have this to offer. I'm a certified community health worker, so if you want my information after this, that's completely fine. We need an after-school program. Most communities have a life center, but a lot of times, we don't even see those people. I was literally helping like 3 or 2 little girls do their homework on the back of somebody's trunk of their car. So if we can get some resources within the community, all 4, I'm here to help, just let me know and just reach out to me. That's all I wanted to know and tell them as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yeah. Colleagues, if, I'll entertain a motion to accept Item Number 4.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I just thought about it for just for the public. I was communicating with the clerk before to make sure we could accommodate the first speaker so that she could be able to get her words out. All right, and the next item was Item Number 20. I'm sorry, that was referred back. All right, did you say we need that? Okay. Colleagues, I know we just passed the consent agenda, but we do need to treat Item Number...
31.
31 separately. So I am going to, I'd like to entertain a motion for Item Number 31 separately.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll try to keep in mind supplemental items should be treated separately. All right. Thank you also, Madam Chief of Staff, for helping to address that situation. All right. Is this the one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this will be my first quasi-judicial hearing as mayor. So I have a special script to follow here.
You're in for a treat.
All right, let's do this. We are on Item Number 27. Yep. Do I need to wait for you? All right. The next matter is Agenda Item Number 27, which includes a major special use permit, major transportation special use permit and major site plan, application for Lyons Farm Elementary School, Application Number M2400001. The hearing in this matter is judicial in nature and will be conducted in accordance with special safeguards. Witnesses may be sworn in, must be sworn in. They are now, they are subject to cross-examination, and written evidence must be offered for incorporation into the record. Okay. At this time, people who wish to testify should have signed up on the special sheet for this hearing at the clerk's station. If you have not already done so, please go to the clerk's station now and sign in. Anyone who plans to testify, including city staff, should now go to the clerk's station to be sworn in or to give your affirmation, and then please return to your seat. All right. So college students, you guys came on the right night. This is a very rare type of hearing. There's very specific orders that we have to follow here. At this time, counsel, I will address you. Do any council members need to withdraw from consideration of this case because of a conflict that would prevent them from rendering, that would prevent you from rendering a fair and impartial decision in this matter? If I could receive a verbal yes or no. Counselor Cook?
No.
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 Counselor Freeman?
No.
No. Thank you. All right. So I will explain what we are doing here. This is an explanation of our proceedings moving forward. Before we begin, I would like to, I would like a representative or an attorney for the applicant and for any opponents to come to the microphone and identify yourself to the council, and then take your seat in the front row. If you're not a part of this case, I'll ask you to sit in the second row. If an attorney or representative wishes to cross-examine a witness, please raise your hand immediately after the witness has testified, and I will recognize you. All written information, including maps, you want to be considered should be officially submitted as evidence. Copies of evidence you want to have admitted, with the exception of the staff report... Copies of evidence you want to have admitted, with the exception of the staff report and attachments, should be given to the city attorney and to the opposing side, if any. Each side may raise objections to the admission of evidence on the basis of relevance, hearsay, or any other evidentiary ground. Questions concerning admissibility will be handled by the city attorney. Please do not hand anything directly to council members until it is first, until it has first been reviewed by the city attorney and has been admitted as evidence. We will first hear from city staff, who have studied the request, then from the applicant, and then from opponents to the application, if any. We will now open the hearing and hear from city staff.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Dockery. I'm from the planning department. So this evening
Could you turn that mic a little bit?
I sure can. This evening, we will need three votes from the council. One for the major special use permit, one for the transportation special use permit, and one for the major site plan. The major site plan is not a public hearing, but the other two are. I will describe everything as one, and then have you all break that out as different hearings, if that's all right with you, since it's the same information for all three. Is that acceptable?
It is.
Okay. So Durham Public Schools has submitted a request to amend a major site plan to construct a new elementary school. A major special use permit, a transportation special use permit, and a major site plan for the proposed project were previously approved by city council on December 3, 2018. The permits and plan included certain conditions of approval, which the applicant would like to be removed from the site plan, the major special, the major site plan specifically. These three conditions of approval require off-site transportation improvements at Fayetteville Road and NC 751. A new major special use permit and transportation special use permit are required if the applicant wishes to make changes to the previously approved major site plan, including removing certain conditions of approval related to that plan. Major special use permits and transportation special use permits are quasi-judicial approvals. The public hearing for those items must follow quasi-judicial procedures. These applications may be submitted concurrently with the major site plan, as has taken place tonight, but decisions shall be rendered with a separate motion for each request. Staff will make a recommendation following the presentation of all evidence at the public hearing. Staff requests that all agenda items, materials be made part of the record, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions for city staff or any party thus far? All right. At this time, we will now hear from the applicant.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Rinald Stevenson with DRMP. Address is 5808 Farrington Place in Raleigh. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, and our firm has been involved with this project and prepared the traffic study and the transportation special use permit application. And I think the application is part of the staff packet, and we certainly would like that application and our information to be entered into evidence for the transportation special use permit. And what I'm going to do is there are four findings for this transportation special use permit that must be met. I am going to read those, if necessary. Read those four findings, and then our response to each finding. So finding number one, the traffic generated by the development and associated improvements to the street system will not have a significant adverse impact on the surrounding area. Significant adverse impact shall include, A, substantial increases in traffic on local residential streets such that the majority of the traffic is not associated with the residential properties which front on the street, or B, the need to widen local residential streets, which would detract significantly from the character or basic function of the nearby streets. So to address this finding, the traffic generated by the proposed elementary school was not expected to adversely impact surrounding residential streets. School trips are anticipated to access the school via Scott King Road. Traffic generated by the school is expected, is expected to cause a minimal increase in traffic congestion on Scott King Road and surrounding roadway network. Most school trips are expected to occur in a 30 to 45-minute period during the morning for drop-off time, and a 30 to 45-minute period in the afternoon during dismissal time, pickup time. The school would be expected to generate very few trips during other times of the day. Roadway improvements were required as part of the school by city staff and NC DOT to mitigate the impacts of traffic generated by the school on the surrounding streets. And I'll read those improvements out in the, in a response to another finding. So in summary, all their trips from the proposed school will utilize roadway facilities that are not considered residential streets. The school trips are only expected to occur for a short period of time during two periods of the typical weekday. The site is not expected to have adverse impacts on the surrounding area. Finding number two, adequate provisions have been made for safe and efficient vehicular circulation, parking, and loading, and pedestrian access. So addressing this finding, adequate provisions have been made for safe and efficient vehicular circulation in the following ways. The final design for the elementary school includes one point of access for entrance for staff and parents along Scott King Road into the site, and there's a separate entrance for buses into the site. Exclusive turn lanes are recommended to be provided at both of those driveway entrances. For a seventeen, or seven hundred and sixteen student elementary school, a maximum high demand internal stacking on the campus is projected to be 1,536 feet for student pickup and drop-off. This maximum high demand internal stacking length accounts for an additional 30% extra stack, of extra stacking than what is expected to occur on a typical day. The current plan shows that maximum high demand internal stacking is exceeded, and approximately 2,040 feet of internal stacking distance is provided on campus. It is anticipated that the stacking area will be used by parents dropping off their children and picking up the children before and after school. The student loading and drop-off area is located separately from the main staff and bus parking lots. Students will be picked up and dropped off at an internal roadway that is not anticipated to get traffic from other, other means of traffic. Adequate provisions have been made for parking and loading in the following ways. The site requirement for parking from the UDO requires a total of 105 parking spaces for the school, including six handicap spaces. The design for the site includes 105 total parking spaces with seven handicap spaces, and the parking will be adequate for the site. The loading areas for this, for service vehicles are located along heavy-duty pavement. And adequate provisions have been made for pedestrian access to the site in the following ways. A pedestrian path will be provided at the western end of the site adjacent to the car site entrance. This allows pedestrian access to the school from Scott King Road and will provide access to the pedestrian sidewalks located on Goldflower Drive and Lion Tree Lane. Along Scott King Road, a sidewalk will be constructed along the front edge of the site, and all pedestrian access points to the site provide handicap accessible features, including ramps, crosswalks, and accessible slopes. Finding number three, the traffic generated by the proposed development and any proposed improvements to the street system will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Significant adverse impacts include, but not limited to, undue concentration of air pollutants or excessive noise or vibrations. Traffic generated by the proposed development will be mitigated by the recommended improvements to the roadway network. Improvements to roadway and intersections near the site serve to minimize trip duration and idling times during peak, peak travel hours, as well as during non-peak hours of the day. Minimizing trip duration and idle time serve to minimize the pollution impact of increased traffic. Furthermore, students were previously enrolled, students at this school were previously enrolled at other, other schools in the area, and transference of attendance of these students does not demonstrate an actual increase in overall vehicular travel to serve these students. This school will provide a closer, closer school for these students, which minimizes overall vehicular travel times. Finding number four, the traffic generated by the development can be accommodated by the existing or funded transportation system, or adequate traffic mitigation measures have been proposed as part of the development application. Proposed mitigation measures shall become conditions of the special use permit. The adopted level of service for the adjacent roadways may be considered in making the determination, but shall not be the sole factor considered by the governing body. So to address this impact, as I mentioned previously, a traffic impact analysis was prepared for this school to determine the traffic impacts on the roadway network. A supplemental addendum to this traffic study was also prepared subsequent to the original traffic study. Both of those studies were prepared according to City of Durham and NC DOT guidelines and standards. The, the school is expected to have a maximum enrollment of 716 students and 84 staff members. Access to the school is provided via Scott, via Scott King Road, with one full movement access serving to a car entrance, and one full movement access serving as a bus entrance and vehicular exit. The potential impacts to the surrounding system caused by additional traffic generated by the school was determined by analyzing the intersections and surrounding roadways. Since the AM peak hour of the school coincides with the AM peak hour of adjacent, of the adjacent roadway network, the AM peak hour is the critical time period for this study. According to the MST A school calculator, a 716-student public elementary school would generate a total of 946 trips during a typical day. Of that total, 618 trips are expected in the morning peak hour, and 244 trips are expected during the school peak hour in the afternoon. Traffic generated by the school is expected to occur in a 30 to 45-minute period during the morning, and 30 to 45-minute period in the afternoon. And the improvements that are, improvements that are being constructed by the school to address traffic impacts include, at Scott King Road and the bus entrance, the driveway is going to be constructed with one inbound lane, two outbound lanes. The outbound lane will provide 100 feet of storage. The radius for the approach will accommodate a free-flowing turning movement for school buses. Stop control will be provided at this location, and an exclusive westbound left turn lane on Scott King Road will be provided with 50, a minimum 50 feet of storage. Second intersection at Scott King Road and the car entrance is an entrance-only with one inbound lane. A center two-way left turn lane will be constructed along Scott King Road between Goldflower Drive and the, and this school entrance. And an exclusive westbound, or exclusive eastbound right turn lane would be constructed on Scott King Road with 125 feet of storage. The, as I mentioned, the center left turn lane that has been constructed on Scott King Road will extend up to Goldflower Drive. Those are the improvements that are required of the school to mitigate the traffic impacts, and that concludes my presentation of the four findings of fact.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? By, any questions by any council member or the opposing side? Councilmember Cook.
I just want to make a clarifying, I just want to have a clarifying question. We had at the beginning city staff request that all of the attachments be entered into evidence, and then, Mr. Stevenson, you asked for the application itself to be entered, that I don't have that on my supporting documents, and I just want to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing.
Okay. Is that, is that in the staff report application?
It is not. I don't believe it's part of it, because typically y'all don't want to have the application with the signatures on it. But all of the information that was part of it would have been included.
That, that is, that is fine with us. If the application itself is not included because of that, the responses, I think, are, and that's what I wanted to really get into record.
Okay. So you're gonna not be asked for that to be
Good.
Record. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Number nine, attachment H. You have that in your reference to findings?
That for me as a draft order?
No, that's, yeah, that's the draft order, I'm sorry.
Apologize for the confusion.
If you can't find it in the documents, it was very well-covered in his presentation, and he called out each of the findings, so I think that you have all of the information that would have been in that document if it's not included.
Okay. So we have pertinent information?
You do, yes.
Councilmember Cook, that's that?
That was all my questions.
Okay. Colleagues, are there any other questions for the applicant at this time? All right.
Thank you.
And next, if any, we will now hear from any opponents to the application? All right. Thank you. Considering there are no opponents, we have the information needed here. I will now ask for city staff to, if you have a recommendation concerning this major special use permit.
The information submitted and the information heard here, staff recommends approval of the TSUP.
All right. Thank you. So I'll bring this matter back before the council. Counsel, is there any deliberation? All right. None being
So staff's recommending approval of the, of the TSUP, right? Will staff bring a recommendation on the major special use permit?
I will. Remember, you'll have to do two different hearings. So you'll have to vote after you close this public hearing and have your conversation and vote, and then I get to do it again.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
All right. So no deliberation being heard. I will now entertain a motion to approve the major, major language here. All right. So I'm forming this motion to be, one, grant the permit with the conditions recommended by staff.
So moved.
Second.
Right. It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. We go back to the top.
Jessica Dockery again. This one should be much, much quicker. The major special use permit is based on a previous site plan, which is now being amended by the major site plan. Nothing is changing that would, you would respond to for your four findings of fact and the 13 review factors. The only difference is that the order for the major special use permit referred to the previously approved site plan, and so you're essentially just referring to a new site plan. So if you would like us to run through the findings of fact and the review factors, we could, but nothing changes short of pulling out those three conditions of approval that are referred to. If that's clear.
Yeah. Let me just get a understanding from the council. Colleagues, did we clearly understand what was just stated? Okay. All right. Okay. We will now hear from the applicant.
Um, again, Ronald Stevenson, uh, with DRMP and I'll, um, I don't really have anything further to add on this particular portion of it. I think it's, as staff mentioned, it's all been covered and happy to address any questions that may be related.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from council or the opposing side, if any? All right. If any, are there any opposition? Is there any opposition? All right. Considering none, back before the council, is there any deliberation? All right. Staff, what is your recommendation?
Based on the evidence presented this evening and the submitted evidence, staff recommends approval of the major special use permit.
Thank you. So therefore, I will entertain a motion to grant the permit with the conditions recommended by staff.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. And the third one is not a public hearing, so we can just go directly to.
Yes.
The motion. All right. And lastly, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the major site plan amendment, case D two, four, zero, zero, one, four, nine for Lyons Farm Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you so much. That's it. All right. We just. Good job, man. Nope. For, uh, for, for the public who's wondering why we are so weird about this, uh, those, those quasi judicial, judicial, uh, hearings are very specific. They are, uh, really important, but it's also an opportunity where the, uh, the, the council serves as judge and jury. And it is, uh, while we just sort of went through it like a formality, they can be really big, they can have a really big impact. So, um, thank you all for your patience on that. All right. We will now move to item number 28.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, Aaron Kane with the Durham City County Planning Department, thank you for having me here tonight. Uh, before I begin, I am, would like to, uh, make sure that you all are aware that, and state for the record, that all planning department items, uh, public hearing items before you tonight have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law and affidavits of all notices are on file in the planning department. This first case before you tonight is a request for a utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change, which has been received from Jamie Schwedler of Parker Poe for three parcels of land totaling 11.375 acres and located at 5780, 5802, and 5904 South Miami Boulevard. The annexation petition is for a continuous, contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits and involves only one of the three parcels in the zoning request, 5780 South Miami. The zoning map change request to Plan Development Residential 37.798 is for all three parcels and is to allow up to 432 multifamily units. The properties are currently designated mixed residential neighborhood on the place type map. The proposed PDR 37.978 zoning is generally consistent with the designated place type. This request was originally brought to the city council on December 4th, 2023, and a public hearing was opened. The case was continued to January 2nd, 2024, and then continued again until February 19th, 2024. At that meeting, the case was referred back to staff and the public hearing closed. Since the public hearing was not continued to a date certain, this, um, a new public hearing will need to be opened tonight. Since the last city council meeting that this application was presented, the applicant has decreased the number of units on the site from 540 to 432. Increased the amount of tree coverage to meet new tree coverage standards and has clarified its stormwater commitment. Should the utility extension agreement be approved tonight, it will be revised to reflect the number of units prior to, um, execution. Thank you, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. You've heard the staff report. Colleagues, are there any questions for staff? All right. At this time, we will, uh, open this hearing to the public. And I, um, applicant, uh, welcome. How much time do you think you need?
Uh, probably eight minutes.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the council. I'm Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant tonight. After working on this case for nearly two years, we are proud to present this multifamily case in a key area of RTP and next to RDU, next to key infrastructure in the city that also offers a new housing type and stock that isn't commonly found in this area. Um, I appreciate staff's hard work on this case. Um, as it was mentioned, we were referred back to staff, um, because we were trying to meet the new tree protection ordinance that was, became effective between the time this case went to planning commission and received a favorable recommendation and the time that it was originally scheduled to be in front of the council in December. Um, I'm proud to report that through that hard work with staff and the hard work of the applicant, we did, uh, lose about 20% of our units, but we were able to comply with the new tree ordinance. We were also able to retain the percentage of income restricted units that we had originally offered at planning commission, which means that 15 families, 15 residents in Durham will have the ability to rent these income restricted apartments in this area. We're also able to still offer, uh, structured parking in this area, which is key and important in being able to deliver the multifamily project on this constrained site. Uh, the site is the perfect example of an infill site and where you want to place people within the city. It's squarely located between the RTP hub, which will attract jobs, um, and a new type of life and entertainment in RTP, as well as close to RDU Airport and all of the jobs and, and areas throughout the area. Um, it's between 540, 40, and 885, just south of 147, an 11 acre site that contains vacant residential parcels today, but is in close proximity to plenty of shopping, jobs, um, office, and the regional transit center there on the, uh, right side of the screen. The current uses are vacant and commercial and residential, and there's a major Duke Energy transmission line that's shown to the right of your screen, um, as well as the existing, uh, largely vacant parcels, um, and not much wooded area. Uh, the request that we're seeking is consistent with the place type map due to the policies that I've noted on your screen. The mixed residential neighborhood seeks new places typically built on undeveloped or forest land designed to add a diversity of housing types. This area has, uh, tremendous amount of single family homes, um, and some townhomes just across the railroad tracks. You can see there on the screen, but it doesn't really have the amount of apartments that are needed to, to supply housing for the workforce that's anticipated with RTP, as well as the, uh, jobs that are in the area. The primary uses are residential and in the surrounding area is supported by many civic and commercial institutional places that are just across the street there on Miami. Um, it's also consistent with the place type map guidance on circulation, and that says that basically residents living in this area should be able to walk, bike, um, around the area and get to supporting areas with the transit stops. Uh, the yellow note on the screen shows where the Go Triangle Regional Transit Center is designed to be. All of the green lines on your screen show an existing extensive trail network that's available to the workers, uh, in the area. And the magenta on your screen shows existing sidewalk. We are complementing that existing sidewalk by extending a 10-foot multi-use path on the west side of Miami Boulevard for the length of our site that will connect our site to the existing, um, sidewalk there on the south of the screen. Um, it's also consistent with the Page Miami Design District proposal that staff is bringing forward. Now, I know this hasn't reached council yet, but it's important to note some of the topics that are, um, that are being pursued. This was initiated by staff to anticipate the growth that RTP, uh, is expected to face over the next several decades and encourage transit oriented, oriented development, um, with a higher density than this area is seen because it's underserved by apartments today. Now, the only way you can get that higher density, um, level of, of housing product is by providing garages. You can't use, uh, surface park sites to provide the amount of density that you would need, especially on this site because we've got that transmission line, um, and we've got some, several existing streams on the site that restrain us. So looking at those policies for density and connectivity, we really need to have that, uh, that structured parking there on site. What's also notable is that there is a desire to connect this site, this future zoning down to our site. Today, that would go over a Duke easement owned, uh, Duke Energy owned property, um, but we've looked into that and, uh, I believe that connection is a possibility for the city to pursue and pursue in the future. The zoning and annexation is outlined on the screen. Commercial general with a development plan exists today in RS 20, um, and we're seeking a planned development residential, as you see with many of your, uh, your apartment products. The annexation is necessary to provide that kind of fill-in of the donut hole on one of the parcels there, uh, shown on the right of the screen. And it's important to note what you're getting today versus what is on, what is, what is entitled today versus what we're offering. The existing approved development plan would be commercial general zoning, only affords opportunity for 12 single family homes or another shopping center in a saturated area, 14% tree coverage, no open space, and no commitment to housing. By contrast, our PDR offers up to 28% of tree coverage, um, which are required to be in areas located in common space or buffers, um, up to 20% of open space versus no open space that's offered today. We're making not only a commitment to housing, but 432 units of housing plus income restricted housing for 15 units in addition to commitment for environmental protections. What's that mean? Well, it means that 15 families will have those income restricted units and the market rate will be available to another 415. And in addition, about a third of the site, as you can see there on the screen, will either be some sort of impervious area, tree, uh, protection, or open space. In addition, our key tech commitments, um, include a limitation on height, no more than 53% of the site will be impervious area. Um, and these are important. The stormwater and green sustainability, uh, commitments that we've committed to are similar to the Hobson Road case that you approved around the same time this case was going through. The difference is this case kind of came to a halt when we tried to increase, um, our tree protection to make, make sure we met that new text change, but we still made the commitments to stormwater, to sustainability commitments that that case made, it was, it was in, um, in vogue at the time. And that includes a post-development runoff rate not exceeding the pre-development rate for 100-year storm. Your UDO only requires protection for one, 10, and 25 years, at least two, can, stormwater control measures, which is in excess of the code, the green building certification that you saw on Hobson Road, EV charging stations, and solar conduit in all of the apartment buildings. So in addition to that, um, income restriction, you're getting a significant amount of environmental benefits. And then we are still committing to that income restriction of three and a half percent of units, it's 60% AMI for 10 years. And that's important because at the time that this case was going through, that was on par with, with what the, the city had seen, but they were getting a lot more units at the time. Now, because we have to comply with the tree protection, we had to drop the units, but we're still making that same commitment to the income restricted units. And so in place of just 12 single family homes, you're getting 415 units that are market rate and 15 units that are income restricted for families in the area. Um, as a result, your comprehensive plan policy overview finds us consistent with 17 of the 21 applicable policies and exceeds UDO requirements in eight of those policies and meets UDO requirements in, in the following eight. Most of those are based on those key text commitments I read out, dealing with income restricted units and providing meaningful environmental commitments. Um, and then, so in addition, we also meet the UDO, um, 3.5.10 review criteria, consistent with a comprehensive plan. We're compatible with the area, um, but we're also providing a more suitable zoning, um, than is what, what is in place today, which is already saturated with commercial by balancing out the uses and adding residential in this area. What's really important about this is that we're offering supply in the place that Durham has instructed it's needed. We're doing it in a way that was consistent with your comprehensive plan, and that was noted by a vote of six to three, uh, by the planning commission. And throughout the case, we've not only received no opposition from the public, but we've actually received two residents in the area, nearby, nearby property owners that want to see development here because existing development today is a vacant site that is often clouded with trash. Um, and they spoke about how they wanted to see more activity in the area. Uh, one of those members is not able to be with us tonight, but I do believe Greg Taylor has signed up to speak and will share, um, some of those perspectives of why having more units in this area, um, is better for, uh, before the shopping center. And so with that, uh, we respectfully, um, thank you for your time. We look forward to answering any of your questions and look forward to bringing this product to Durham in place of just another shopping center or 12 single family units. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Bill? So the names I have, these may be part of the applicant team. Greg, Sandra, Jamie Schwedler, Earl, um, yeah. I think you all's handwriting went bad with mine in first grade.
Those are all members of the team and available for questions if there are any.
All right. I don't have any other cards. Since it's a public hearing, I don't have any other card. Oh, I do have one. Oh, the resource, okay. All right. Well, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing, um, I'm sorry. I'll bring it back before the council and declare the public hearing closed and back before the council. Councilmember Cook.
Thank you. Um, these are a couple of questions for the applicant. You talked a little bit about, um, that you had done some, had some conversations around a possible easement in the future, and I was wondering if you could expand on that.
Sure. Let me bring up the slide that shows the area we're talking about, or I believe you're asking about. Um, and that would be right in here. You can see that on the screen. Um, the area just around the intersection of Emperor Boulevard, that property to, directly to our north, is owned by, uh, Duke Energy, and we reached out to them, um, prior to the hearing to understand whether a connection would be feasible in the future, um, and had a, a wonderful conversation with them, and they did, um, express that why they couldn't make that a commitment at this time, they would certainly entertain requests from the city to explore that in the future, that there wasn't anything from an operational standpoint that couldn't happen, um, in the future, but it is subject to their review and design, uh, of this specific plan.
Great. Was there a city, uh, staff person on that call with you?
No, there was not.
Could, could I get just some clarity on what that looks like if, if Duke is waiting to hear from the city on whether that easement is possible, what the next steps might be there?
I don't believe, I mean, I, unless Bill knows something I don't, um, I don't believe that they're waiting on the city. I think it's just a, a conversation there and they need to have and be more, um, understanding as to how an easement for a sidewalk, which I believe is what we're discussing here, um, would affect their site and, and, and their operations. There's nothing from the city that I don't.
Right. It wasn't a, as I understand it, the city has not made a request to make that extension, but should the city make that request, it's something that they would entertain in the future in connection with the zoning to the north.
So that's what I'm trying to clarify. So the, they, Duke had stated that it wasn't a request that would come from you, it would have to come from the city in order for that easement to occur. And so then I'm, that's my question to staff is how that happens, but I'm not sure. Maybe I'm not following.
Yeah. Well, I think it's part of, it would, it'd be part of a future capital improvements project or something that the city could pursue. We don't control the Duke Energy land and don't own that land, and so it's not something that we have the ability to do, but if it's something that the city would wish to see that connection in the future, um, Duke would entertain those discussions.
And so I guess my question is, what does that look like in, in going forward? How do we, are we able to move forward? What would be the next steps?
I may defer to Bill on that, but I think one thing we want to make sure that we have is an identified project in our, um, bike and pet plan, uh, for this site and also potentially identify it, um, in, as, as Jamie mentioned, a capital improvements program, um, so that we're not, and starting on this endeavor without knowing that it's something that the city can actually construct.
Bill Judge, Transportation. I can, yeah, really just confirm at this point, there is not a identified project or priority project there as part. We have just started updating our bike-walk plan. It'll be evaluated, but I can't tell you whether or not it would be a selected priority project anytime in the future.
Thank you. Okay. My next question is that you talked about doing an income restriction for 3.5% units and that that was sort of the consistent thing that was being presented or being proffered at the time that this originally came, and I know that this project has been forthcoming for a long time, but now, we're seeing generally around 5% at a minimum of offered units. And I know that this is a 60% AMI as opposed to maybe some of the ones we're seeing at 80%, but we are also seeing 30 years to match the definition of what affordability is. At this moment, this is simply income-restricted, and I would say potentially even destabilizing because 10 years is such a short amount of time. So, I'm wondering if you could speak to the decision there not to extend it to meet that affordability definition and if there's any interest in actually matching what is now coming before the council at that 5% or greater amount as well.
Yeah, it's a great question, and I think the fact that this has been pending for two years feeds a lot into our decision-making. When a developer seeks to purchase property and build their pro forma, they're doing it on the facts that they know and what the restrictions are at that time. And at that time, we didn't have the tree protection ordinance that could go up to 28% of trees preserved on the site, and so, they were making decisions based on that. It still made the commitment for the income restriction, but in the interim had to lose, I think, close to 80 units. And as you know, those 80 market rate units are what makes the rest of the units able to be subsidized. And so, losing that amount of income or potential offset hurt even more than the original plans were, and then replacing that, those units with additional tree save, which of course doesn't generate any income, but is important to the city nonetheless, makes it even tighter to make the project affordable. And I shouldn't say affordable, makes it even tighter for the project to be built, to be delivered, to receive financing in the future. And so, we made that decision to, over the past six months, working with the city, trying to figure out how we were going to meet that new tree protection ordinance, knowing that that was important, because if we couldn't meet that ordinance, we didn't have any units at all. We wouldn't have a project. And so, making that decision and sacrificing those units, those 80 units we had to give up, was hard, but that's the sacrifice we had to make. And once we did, we didn't have the room left to then say, because we've taken that time to comply with this new ordinance, we can then go above and beyond and make it 5% or make it longer than the 10 years. So, we've done what we could in a very difficult situation in order to comply with that ordinance that was passed, really on just, you know, kind of on the eve of our case coming to council. And it may not be what you're seeing in other cases, but other cases, we're operating on a different set of circumstances when they wrote their pro formas in a different market situation, and so, we're doing the best we can to deliver those units in the facts that we are in today.
I'm just going to push back about that just a little bit because the 3.5 has been consistent the whole time, so when you lost the units, you would have also lost, right? Percentages, the way that they work is that there's the same, it's not the same number, but you've lost units and therefore, you've also lost number of units that you're designating as affordable. So, yes, 80 units were lost, and I understand that, but at that point, then, we also have lost affordable units in that. So, I just, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding how that's a justification for not, for not being able to look for potentially raising the percentage or potentially raising the longevity. I think that we've talked about this many times, but 10 years doesn't meet any affordability definitions, and so, yeah, I'm just, we're seeing, we're seeing things that are, that are a lot higher, and I understand that there were changes and that this has been ongoing for a long time, but yeah, I would like to see an affordability as opposed to an income restriction, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
I understand, and I think it's also important to see what happened in those two years with the cost of construction and the market and things like that changing, but I understand your point.
I share, I share Councilmember Cook's concerns about affordable housing. I wanted to ask, and maybe I had missed it when I stepped aside, but Commissioner Tony Cease, Planning Commissioner Tony Cease, in his comments, wrote about being able to cross Miami Boulevard. He wrote the applicant correctly notes, "Approximately trail system of RTP less than 200 feet from the northern corner of the project, but no provisions exist for pedestrian crossings of the five-line Miami Boulevard at either of the two existing signalized intersections near the site. The applicant made a verbal agreement to pursue additional treatments at that intersection. The city and the applicant should work together to ensure that those intersections are transformed to allow protected east-west pedestrian and bike crossings. To render this location viable for pedestrian biking mode choices, taking full advantage of the area location, to fail to do so is to be complicit by the applicant and the city in advancing inequitable transportation outcomes through what would be a land use decision insufficiently supported by corresponding design of the public right-of-way to meet the needs of all through the equitable and sustainable provisions of the mobility and access through design." I wonder if we could get a response to Commissioner Tony Cease's comments there from the appropriate, either staff or applicants, or if you all have spoken together about those comments.
Yeah, and I think that ties into the discussion we were just having earlier about making that connection from the site to the intersection and then having the intersection treatments there. Again, that's not currently in the bike-walk plan, as far as I'm aware. Bill can correct me if I'm wrong on that. That is something that can certainly be looked at in the bike-walk plan for where would be the appropriate level of prioritization for this location compared to the other needs we have in the city. I think the other thing to be aware of is that Miami Boulevard there is NC 54, so anything that we would want to do would be subject to NCDOT approval. Again, it's not just a state road, but it's actually a signed highway. So, we would need to deal with any approvals that would be necessary from NCDOT. So, I wouldn't be able to state certainly now that we could, while we, we as staff certainly want to achieve what Commissioner Cease described, and that's certainly a goal of ours, that's certainly not something I can commit to or guarantee at this time.
Thank you. One question to the applicant. You mentioned the Page Miami Design District. That's sort of this process to re-envision that entire area. You need density, you need to change the design over time. It'll take some time for that to happen, and I'm glad that you referenced that. And I'm curious if you've considered a commitment, because you do have the commitment to bring the building up, you've got the structured parking, you've got a lot of elements that would contribute to something like that. Have you considered also making commitment to using the design standards, committing to the design standards of that design district to keep that consistency with the design district?
We hadn't considered that. I know that that's still in its early stages, and I don't know what those would be. It's kind of subject to change and haven't been adopted yet. It's something we could explore at site plan, but wouldn't be able to commit to it at this point.
And then, we've got the 10-foot, 10-foot trail, sidewalk trail for pedestrians and bicyclists on the front. I think, I think this is the right, the right use. I think it's the right location. It's a weird site because you're constrained, you can't... I would be asking more questions about connectivity, but there really isn't that opportunity for connectivity. You've got Miami Boulevard hugging the east corner, you've got the train tracks on the west, you've got, looks like what is a substation to the north, so it's hemmed in there. And so, I think, I think that apartments is the right thing in this location. I think the density is right, and, and there are some challenges. There's a lot of power lines that are also right along the road. So, these are all things that I'm thinking about. I'm, I'm on the fence on this one, but there, but I do think that there are a lot of things that are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Oh, I forgot to mention, I consistently ask about green development, and this is making multiple commitments to green building that I think are really, really important and things that we ask, we ask that the development community consider. This is making a direct commitment to green building, and on top of that, it's making some additional stormwater commitments that I, that I appreciated seeing as well. I liked the sort of list of green development items, and then, we'll select from these items, including green roof and other things. So, I think that's a very good commitment. That's definitely something that I want us to see a lot of moving forward. We've seen these, we've seen these from time to time. I want us to consistently see that and build that in the UDO. So, again, some very good things in this proposal, some things that I wish would be more, a little more consistent with the comprehensive plan, and also considering the site constraints. You know, this is, this is pretty, this is pretty good. We'll be listening to my colleagues up here.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions for the applicant or for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I did have a question for staff. Just in context, I know at work session, we received presentation... Hold on, I'll read it now. Synchronizing enrollment capacity, residential developments in Durham, by Durham Public Schools, and I just wanted to just hold intention, the conversation around new developments, especially when they're filling in in dense ways that, like we need, the way we need, just what the impact is on our schools, and then also knowing that there'll likely be children living in that site, what that, those hard connections, what it will look like for a child, bike-riding or walking to navigate that space, how we're handling that in the interim till the UDO is passed.
So, yeah, a couple of things to unravel there. The first is, you know, as Bill mentioned, we, staff is right now working on updating the Durham Bike-Walk Plan, and I'm aware that one of the factors that's going to go into that is how do we provide transportation for school-aged children? How do we allow them to get to school in alternative ways? So, that's going to be one of the prioritization metrics, I'm sure, for the Durham Bike-Walk Plan. Another thing is that planning staff has been having numerous conversations with DPS staff about improving and upgrading our projections for the number of students who are going to be, that we would model to attend our public schools due to new developments. So, you should be seeing that in the next, within the next few cycles, an improved reporting for the number of students that we would model to come into schools.
And if you could help me, I'm trying to remember the number that the DPS stated was actual cost per student added versus what we do now.
I can't tell you what we kind of do now as how much the county funds. Durham DPS estimates that it's about $5,374 per student, per year for operating costs, and then, for each new student, about $100,000 overall in capital costs as a one-time expenditure. And we provide those in the, in the staff report.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I just wanted to just have that front of mind in just context of like going forward in all of these cases. It's always kind of ringing in my, in my ears. I really appreciate Councilmember Cook's comments and questions, and I do think that community benefits are what, what drives my decisions in these conversations and realizing that there, it might be tough for you as the developer, the applicant in this case, you know, considering hard times or the delays or what have you and the change in costs. I think because, because these costs aren't going down, we have, we have to figure out how to navigate going forward in a way that's actually more beneficial considering our cost as a city and the residents, you know, who pay the taxes to send these children to school and now, private school as well. And so, I just want to make sure that when we ask applicant about, you know, whether it's 10 years or 30 years, that there's an understanding of how far away from where we should actually be in this conversation we are. So, I think currently, we receive like $500 offers towards DPS, not $100,000 for each kid that's added, and just acknowledging that it takes, you know, 3.5% is laughable. I just, I just, I mean, 10 years is really just not really a comparable compromise, and I know that it's not something we can make a developer do, but I think when they're in, in community with us as a council, there's an understanding that it should be similar to what's coming before us, and so, I do want to make sure I lift that up. And then, I'll just add that I think, as was mentioned, another shopping center, we're 12 units, 12 family units. When a new development is coming into a community, I think it's important to not try to threaten, you know, the council or the community in not, like acknowledging, just because by right, you could do that. It always, it's very off-putting, and every time that a applicant does it, it pisses me off, so I just want to make sure I state that upfront. And I'll just add that I think that the tree protections are there for a very good reason, and I don't want that to be the excuse for why you can't, you know, do anything different on affordable housing, but I do, that's your choice. And I do want to make sure that we're figuring out how to be more Vision Zero ready as a city, knowing that these infill areas are where developers are going to be looking. And so, I do want to hear from staff in the coming months or so, you know, what that looks like because it's going to have a price tag, and I think we should share that cost with our new developers or developers coming in. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Rith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo, or I want to sort of note the comments from my colleague, Councilmember Baker. I think you're right. I think this is the right project for this site. It's a tricky site with the tracks there, with 54 and with the easement. I think it fits in the mixed residential neighborhood as it's designated on the placetime map, and I also want to applaud my colleagues. I think that the questions that we're asking are the exact right questions in this case. And actually, Councilmember Cabir and I met with the applicants earlier, had the same conversations, I think, about affordable housing, about this connectivity issue, because I've biked over there. We've, Councilmember Cabir and I have actually biked to meetings of the MPO over there near the regional transit center. There are bike paths, as your slide showed, right? But bike paths, there's sidewalks, so there's connectivity there if you can get across 54. The other issue is schools, as my colleague, Councilmember Freeman, raised. I think you've, we've given you a tough task. You've brought this forward, the rules have changed since then. In most cases, we like to see 5% or more affordable housing. I'm satisfied in this case that you've, you've done all you can with the changes to the tree cover. This is a little bit unusual, every case is a little bit different. I'm satisfied that you've, that you've done as much as you can there, or at least you've satisfied our desire for affordable housing. I think the issue of the connectivity across 54 is a tricky one. I appreciate, Mr. Judge, and the work that we are doing on the bike and walk plan. I think we need to challenge ourselves. I think it's an issue that we, as a city, along with you all, can help solve. It's not for you to solve by yourselves. I do think it's something that we, as a city, should be challenged to, to build that, to acquire that easement and build that connection so one can get across easily 54 and then connect to all the regional transit centers. It's all there, accessible by, by paths and sidewalks. So, I think it's real, a real exciting potential if we can make that link across 54, but again, I think it's not solely your burden. I think we need all to work together on that. The final question I have is about schools, and I wonder if, it's certainly a concern, did you consider some contribution to the, these school fund as part of your development
We recognize that the schools are important and that the capacity issues are something that the county and the city continue to struggle with. We did not put the priority in that, in this particular area because we were putting the priority on the tree protection, and I know that that was, you know, it seems like it's been passed a long time ago, but it was passed literally right before we were going to get our vote. And then, once we went back and looked at all the other things that we had to adjust, it's not something that, that we factored in as important to, as, it's important, but as important as the other aspects of making sure we didn't drop our income-restricted units down. We didn't go from 60 up to 80%, which you're getting in plenty of cases. You're getting 80% AMI or even 100% AMI in other cases. We kept it 60 because we heard the message that that was what was really needed in this area. So, that's where the decision was made. So that's where the decision was made.
Is that something you would consider?
I can confer with my client if we want to hear from other colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues, for a great conversation. I, I want to, I think it's worth noting the distinction in nomenclature between affordable housing and income restricted. And I think there's some deliberate intentions behind using one term versus another. And we should probably caution ourselves with conflating the two of affordable and income restricted. This, this, given what's going on in that area and RTP, I think that this is the right type of development, given the trajectory that area is on. I read the planning commission's comments and I, I too was intrigued by Commissioner Cease's comments. He voted yes, by the way, but it was a yes, but. And, and the issue of connectivity is something we're clearly going to have to deal with as a council, as a county. DOT is going to have to be involved in that conversation. So I want to, I want to contour my consideration of this case, the four corners of this case with a realistic assessment of what a particular, one particular development can do with respect to what will be a universal pursuit for, for the city and other players. With that said, I don't think approving this particular case as, as it's presented precludes or will hamper, hamper us in any way, hamper us in any way from doing what we need to do in terms of connectivity moving forward in that area. I, I, you know, when the, the planning commission approved this and then subsequent to the planning commission, you, you could have argued that's ex post facto in terms of the tree coverage thing. So I'm, I'm a bit impressed that you, that you did it. You could have come in here and said, well, even if it was an hour before, you know, we're not going to, we don't want to be held to ex post facto kind of ordinances in terms of tree coverage. So voluntarily put that in quotes, lessening density to improve tree coverage. My suspicion is that if you had maximized density, you would have gotten questions about what are you going to do about tree coverage? Tree coverage had to come in. So I want to commend you for trying to anticipate and reading the lay of the land. I do also want to say that, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think you threatened us. The, the, the issue of what will go there instead of something else was actually broached by this council. We started that conversation. I can remember a number of times when the council member would ask staff, if not this, then what would go there? And I know developers have been listening to us and contouring appropriately. I mean, if I were arguing a case, I'd gently remind folk as well, you know, what the alternative is. So I want to say that. I don't think you've been anything but respectful before this council as you've always been. So I do want to put that out there. Yeah, I think in terms of the density, what's needed in that area, I live not too far from this area, so I'm watching what's happening in the RTP area. I think that single family homes would not be a good idea and another shopping center in that area. I'm appreciative of the green, the commitment to green standards as well. And I know Councilmember Baker has championed that and I'm glad to see moving towards that. Not perfect. I haven't, I haven't voted on any perfect projects, but it's a darn good one. And it seems like the iterations that we've seen have gotten better. I'm averse to council-generated continuances. I've said that time and time again because whether we want to do it or not, it creates expectations. It creates almost a, well, go do this. And then if you bring it back and have met it, then, you know, and although that's not explicitly stated, a layperson watching a meeting, you create that expectation. You do your work and, and bring your A gun, A game when you come before us. I think it's gotten better. I think the, the planning commission got this one right. I'll be supporting this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, do you want us to go on break or do you want us to just go ahead and talk?
We'll finish this one and then go on break.
Thank you. I realize that this is going, I thought we were just in the questions for applicant and staff, so I will be in support of this project. I think that while it doesn't hit everything, I think there was a lot of shifting going on with ordinances and the applicant landed in a tricky spot. So while we are not getting everything that we may want, I understand that there was real effort made by the applicant to, to hit as many goals as possible, including the commitment to sustainability. I think it really becomes our, our burden as, as council and as staff around the connectivity piece around across 54. I think that we can see some really great opportunity and that really is our work. And so, and that's going to have to happen anyway between the, what's happening in the area with the TOA that we, we just are just starting that work. That just came to joint city county planning whenever, not last week, but the week before. So council hasn't even seen that and county commission hasn't even seen that full boards. So that's just kicking off. And so I think this type of project moves us in the right direction. It aligns well with what we're going to be seeing in, in the TOA. And just appreciate again, I hear my, I hear my colleagues on some of their questions around income restricted units and wanting more. Structured parking is expensive. Stormwater infrastructure is expensive. Making commitments to sustainable design is also expensive. And while I understand colleagues wanting the best of the best, at the end of the day, the consumer of that product is paying it and whether they're a renter or owner. So we do need to be thoughtful about the types of ordinances that we are, are pushing for. They are important, but we have to always understand what the consequences of that is. We lost 80 units. So while I appreciate the tree ordinance and I can understand why folks wanted it, there is a cost to that. The cost is 80 units. What would have the affordability, what could the affordability piece have been? I don't know that because that's not the project that I have before me. So I will be in support. Again, doesn't have everything, but it has a good, a good mix of the different types of goals we're trying to achieve with development. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be brief. Did you, I'm going to say a lot of the same thing, but.
Senator Councilmember Rith, go ahead.
Well, you go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to your request that we consider a donation to Durham Public Schools. And if we're able to make that change at the table, we'd be willing to make a $50,000 donation to Durham Public Schools at the first certificate of compliance for the building, if that's acceptable to staff.
That's acceptable to staff.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I, I'm just going to throw this nugget out there. Councilmember Cabir is leading up a housing initiative that will have a lot of things in it, which will hopefully ultimately end in a, a fund that everyone could donate into. Second.
Not just the city.
Not just the city, but, but everyone. And, and we'll be able to do a lot more with it. I, I want to, you know, really harp on the professionalism of this. You know, when we, when we passed that tree preservation at the response of, at the request of residents, I knew the trade off was going to be, it was going to make it a bit more costly to build. It was, it was the process that we were adding on to. And that's the trade offs we have to have. Being environmentally sensitive has a cost to it and that is just a reality. I think it was the right thing to do, but I also understood what came with it. You know, there's also something, there's a mindset that comes with owning a business. And, and the best business, I think, or, you know, I guess because we look at it as corporate sales tax or whatever, being a good, you know, commercial corporate steward is being a partner, you know? And that's how I look at development. And so I don't look at you all as adversaries. I look at how can we make the best out of this situation? And all while considering the end user. So you guys bought it in. You bought this case during a quite tumultuous time. There was a lot of protest or, or not really protest, but a lot of folks speaking out, you know, because we were talking about pay, employee pay at the time. That's what everyone's minds was on, were on. And, and we were looking, we were talking about that and we were talking about the tree preservation, you know? And you guys had to bring this case through and we were moving the goalposts in and out, in and out. I appreciate you going deeper than what we normally hear with the 60%. I'd like more, of course. In principle, that's, we always want more, you know, affordable housing. But as I continuously say, you can build a cheap structure and you can afford the bed you're sleeping in, but if you can't afford anything outside of that, then what's the point? So therefore we have to focus on affordable living. I appreciate the connectivity. I appreciate you increasing the density in what's about to be a very densely populated area. So I appreciate you through all of the changing parts of this, meeting us where we are, where we're going with this. I consider that, you know, headed in the right direction of trying to be a partner in, in, in how we're populating that area. I think this is the right type of housing there. If you look at Cary and Apex and Morrisville, they do a really good job at single family housing. And that is why it's also so expensive over there. So Durham is going to do it right and I hope that we can pass this tonight. I'll be in support as well. And at this moment, I consider we are close to a break. I am going to bring us to the motion. So at this time, colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing 5802 South Miami Boulevard, multifamily into the city of Durham and to authorize the city manager to enter to, enter to, enter into a utility extension agreement with HM Partners LLC.
Moved as read.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry for voting too soon. You can open the vote now. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes six to one with Councilmember Freeman voting no.
Thank you. And I'll now entertain a motion to, number two, to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of residential suburban 20 county jurisdiction and commercial general with the development plan, city jurisdiction and establishing the same as planned development residential 37.978 city jurisdiction.
Moved as read.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes six to one with Councilmember Freeman voting no.
Thank you. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, section 160D dash 605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second.
Moving and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you all. Colleagues, at this time, we will take a break and resume back at 9:30 PM.
I came to this city to develop leadership and supervisory skills. I stayed because of the city's culture and dedication to serving residents. The city of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the Bull City, visit durhamnc.gov/careers.
I came to the city for the great insurance and retirement benefits, but I stayed for stability and vacation time. The city of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the Bull City, visit durhamnc.gov/careers.
I came to the city of Durham to improve living conditions for residents, and I stayed because I'm encouraged to advance my career. The city of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the Bull City, visit durhamnc.gov/careers.
All right. Excuse me. All right. We are now on item number 29, Consolidated Annexation Hurley Road.
Mayor Williams, Mayor ProTed Middleton, and honorable council members. A request for a utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Albert Fontenelle for one parcel of land totaling 1.03 acres and located at 830 Clayton Road. This annexation petition is for a contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. This annexation and initial zoning to residential suburban multifamily would allow up to 12 dwelling units on the site. The applicant in his application has stated the intention to construct five single-family residential structures, though that is not committed. The properties are currently designated established residential on the placetime map. The proposed RSM zoning is generally consistent with the designated use shown on the placetime map. Thank you, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions for staff? Yes. That's Member Cook.
All right. Hey, how are you? Just a couple of quick questions. And so I know that this application is, we don't have a lot of, what is the word I want to use? We don't, we have an idea of what might be used, but we don't have anything committed necessarily. I'm curious to know if there is any, my understanding is that if you proffer something or if you put in something into a commitment, then that is a covenant runs with the land. Otherwise, when we change a zoning, there is nothing that runs with the land if there was a sale. Is that correct?
That is correct. Generally, yes. So, for example, the request here is for a general rezoning to the RSM district. And should the rezoning be approved, then any uses currently allowed in the UDO under the RSM district would be allowed going forward, regardless of who owns the property.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
All right. Well, there are no other questions from staff at this time, I mean, from council. At this time, we will declare this public hearing open. Thank you. And do we have the applicant here? Welcome. How much time do you think you'll need?
Four or five minutes.
All right. There you go, seven minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, Mayor ProTed. I'm Tisha Wymore. I'm a local Durham Realtor, and I am here with the applicant, Albert Fontenelle, to speak on his behalf. I wanted to, following the last, the last one might be a little more difficult. This is a lot simpler process, I think. This is a project that's in southeastern Durham. And southeastern Durham has been experiencing several large development and medium-sized developments that are underway at the current time, as we just heard. Three of them are within a three, within a one-mile radius of 830 Clayton Road, which is the project site. As of today, there are 14-
Could you be closer into that mic?
As of today, there are 14 homes for sale within a one-mile radius of the project site. Of those, eight of them are new construction. And of those, four are multifamily units. In 2023, a site directly across the street from the project at 830 Clayton Road, there was 46 homes sold there. All of those had city services. The annexation of this site is important to contribute to the possibility of homeowners transitioning, buying new homes, obtaining conventional financing, making it easier for cost savings for the homeowners. I wanted to point out one thing regarding the comments, and I think that's Attachment J, that you all have in front of you from the January hearing from the Planning Committee or Commission, excuse me. My takeaway from that was that there wasn't sufficient clarification about the project. There was not a bolstered, you know, narrative, I suppose. And that may be true, but I think that the process has evolved over time. And given what Mr. Fontenelle is planning, he has told them and has in front of you what they are planning is five lots, five homes, single-family homes that are in consistency with what's in the neighborhood already. He's asking for the flexibility with the changing in the zoning so that he might be able to accommodate that. But the basic thing to remember here is Mr. Fontenelle is not a developer. Mr. Fontenelle is a small business owner. He's a sole proprietor. He's a Durham resident. He is using his own funding to make this project happen. And it is a very small economic impact in terms of Durham and the revenue that's received from housing. But it's a lifetime achievement for Mr. Fontenelle. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I do not have any other speakers signed up for this item. So therefore, I'll declare the public hearing closed and back before the council. Colleagues, Councilmember Cook.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, was that, was that your name, Moore? I'm sorry, I just, I had a hard time hearing you with the microphone. Can you say your name for me one more time?
Tisha Wymore.
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 Okay, good question. Right, yes. So I heard you say that the issue at the Planning Commission, and I did watch that Planning Commission, was that there was sort of a lack of clarity around this. And that's kind of was why I was asking those questions at staff. Is Mr. Fontenelle prepared now to commit to the five units?
I think the commitment is what's not really, I don't know that we, yeah, I think he wants to answer. That's a term we don't know.
At the time he requested for the zoning, I thought I could do five units. Now that I'm aware that we can actually do 12, because of all the houses I've needed in Durham, I could commit to the 12 homes.
Okay, my understanding was that you wanted to do no more than five, but you are interested in building all 12?
Yes.
And you had stated before at the Planning Commission that your interest was to provide affordable housing-
That is correct.
-in this area. So can you make any commitments around the affordability of those units?
I haven't done the research, so I cannot make any commitment to that right now. But I am willing to do affordable housing.
I just want to make sure that we clarify. There is no development plan associated with this request. It is a general rezoning. So the applicant cannot commit-
Oh, thank you.
-to anything, to anything right now. If that were to be the case, it would be, there would be required development plan that would need to be submitted and reviewed by staff, additional fees paid. And this case would have to go back to Planning Commission for its consideration.
Thank you.
Councilmember Caviar.
Thank you. I don't have a question for the applicant. I do have a couple of questions for staff. Thank you, Erin. So I get the general rezoning. Is there, can you just explain, so in Planning Commission comments, there were a few things where, why didn't he submit a textual development plan? I guess currently with the zoning that's there, what could be built?
With the zoning that's there, what could be built? I'm trying to, because it's split zone. I believe it's RS 20 in the front and residential rural in the back. So I-
I'm assuming it would be less than five.
Oh, yes, it would be probably two.
Okay. So that is why the rezoning was sought?
Correct.
And then he's kind of going into the next level, and he's kind of stuck at the up to 12 going into the next level?
Correct.
Right? And I'm also assuming that a general rezoning, like, is it, is that a cheaper process than a text development? Like-
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, to do a development plan does add costs and complexity to the project.
So if I'm a person with a small parcel and this is literally an acre of land, that for cost benefit for myself, that the path that the applicant chose was probably the most cost-effective plan for them?
Yes, I want to say this would have been back on the old fee schedule, but a development, a textual development plan would have added about $2,000 to $3,000 in fees.
Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Councilmember Baker, did you have any? Freeman, did you have any questions?
Yeah, just one question. I appreciate you sharing the little information about the area. I'm just curious, maybe, I don't know if I can ask. Obviously, we can't ask questions about commitments affordable, but I'm just kind of curious. Could you tell us what the price point is you're expecting? Can we ask that question? What the expected price point for the housing is? You've listed the prices for other houses in the area. I'm just kind of curious.
I think it's hard to say, given the timeframe, because the market is as volatile as it is. So this is, you're in advance, probably, you know, in a timeframe. Currently, those houses that I've shown you those photos of-
Around, they're around like sort of median, around 400,000, yeah.
Right, so that's about right. And then the multifamily homes there are in the 300, 350. So the difference is probably going to be maybe 5% higher next year. Who knows, you know?
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fontenelle, would I ask you a question, please, sir? Thanks for being with us. How long have you lived in Durham?
Over 40 years.
Are you, are you, do you head like a multinational, multimillion-dollar development firm?
No, sir, I do not.
Sure?
I am sure.
Because I can find, I'm the government, I can find out.
I understand that, sure.
Thank you. I, I understand, I see the 5-5 split in the Planning Commission's vote. I'm finished with you, thank you very much, sir. 5-5 vote, split in the Planning Commission's vote. I think the, some of the metrics that the Planning Commission applied to this case really aren't appropriate for this case. I have voted for annexations and utility extension agreements for about the same amount of land for one single-family homeowner to do something on their land, personally. Resident who's not a multinational, multinational or millionaire developer, long-term resident, it's an acre. I prefer the rezoning generally because of what the possibility is in terms of where we're going as a city trajectory, in terms of density, than what's there now. Yeah, I, I'm going to prove this case. I've approved these type of annexations for same amount of land, less land, for one single-family home to be built. Here is a situation where we've had at least a representation from a long-term Durham resident to build more than that, not just a mansion for himself. I'll take him at his word. I recommend approval of this. I'm going to vote for, to approve this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
This is your first time?
First time, yes.
Nervous?
Very nervous.
You are, you're in this business for the right reason.
Thank you.
And you're doing the right thing. I'm sure we will figure it out. But I appreciate what you're trying to do, put a roof over more folks, over their heads. So however you find a way to get up to 12, whatever type of housing it may be, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay. I'm going to officially close this public hearing. I thought I did that earlier. And now it's back before the council, and you guys have asked a lot of questions already. So I'm going to move to the, to the motion here. So colleagues, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Hurley Road into the city of Durham and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Albert Fontenelle.
Moved as red.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. And I'll also entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of residential rural and residential suburban 20 and Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District B county jurisdiction and establishing the same as the residential suburban multifamily in Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District B city's jurisdiction.
Moved as red.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
And I'll, lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by the North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D-605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, Mr. Fontenelle, great job. You should teach some lessons, some lessons on this. Good job. All right, and our last item for the evening is number 30. Consolidated Annexation, Farrington Road, Multifamily.
Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and Honorable Councilmembers. A request for a utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Dan Jewell of Thomason Hutton for four parcels of land, totaling 19.549 acres, and located at 5216, 5218, 5300, and 5305 Farrington Road. This annexation petition is for a continuous expansion of the property primary corporate limits to allow up to 415 multifamily dwelling units. The properties are currently designated mixed residential neighborhood on the place type map. The proposed planned development residential 21.229 zoning is generally consistent with the designated place type. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. Now heard the staff report. Are there any questions for staff? All right, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. And have Mr. Neil Gosh, how much time do you think you need?
10 minutes, maybe? I don't think it'll be that long.
All right, and you can place 12 minutes on the clock. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the City Council. I'm Neil Gosh, an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street here in Durham. Thank you, Mr. Kane, for your presentation, and also thanks for coming back to Durham. I understand you had a lovely vacation. We have a few folks with us this evening on the land design side. We have Dan Jewell from Thomason Hutton. We also have Earl Llewellyn, yeah, he's still here, with Kim Lee Horn. And we have Kyle Whitaker, who's with Northwood Raven, the developer for the project. I really enjoyed working on this project because Kyle Whitaker with Northwood Raven has emphasized community engagement throughout this process. We've had several meetings with community members from the adjacent Culpeper neighborhood specifically, over the course of the project. I think more than 10 meetings, I believe. And we have added several commitments and concepts to address many of the concerns they raised. To me, even more impressive is that even after receiving a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, we continued having conversations with the neighbors and added even more commitments to address outstanding concerns from them in addition to addressing feedback from the Planning Commission. Specifically, there were four members of the Planning Commission that voted no. Primarily, they expressed concerns over three items. Number one was affordable housing. We have increased our commitment to affordable housing. Secondly, they expressed concerns about traffic. The project includes all improvements recommended by the TIA. And additionally, the applicant has agreed to several additional traffic calming measures. Finally, a few commissioners expressed concerns about tree coverage. And it's true that the development plan commits to the UDO requirement, which is 7%. It should be noted that that is being provided through preservation rather than through replanting. And additionally, the UDO already requires major specimen trees within project boundary buffers to be saved. So, you know, the D plan doesn't show those trees as being saved specifically because it already is a UDO requirement, and therefore that's not in excess of the UDO. In other words, many mature trees will be saved on this site. Also added since the Planning Commission meeting, in response to feedback from community members, we clarified the minimum distance for the offset between the north and south access points. If it's not clear, our neighbors are concerned about creating a straight shot through their neighborhood, so we're offsetting the access points so that the path is not straight, which should make people slow down. We also are committed to striping portions of existing Niagara Drive, which runs through Culpeper at present. This is to divine the travelway and provide a visual cue. We also have agreed to a crosswalk and narrower road design at the extension of Niagara from Culpeper into the project. And we've decreased the maximum height in a portion of the site to help with massing. The project highlights the challenges posed anytime new development is proposed next to established residential areas despite the project, the new project's consistency with the comprehensive plan. I think the level of engagement here has led to a project that delivers on the, you know, audacious vision of the comp plan while simultaneously respecting the existing built environment. And it does this through a concept, which I think Councilmember Baker often alludes, the three Ds, density, diversity, and design. As far as density goes, the project really pushes density up relative to the surrounding project. Culpeper is at 4.5. There's a community across Farrington that's around 3.785. The project directly to our south was recently approved at around a density of 12 dwelling units per acre, and this project fills out at 21.229 dwelling units per acre. As far as diversity goes, the project will have multifamily units set up as traditional apartments, townhomes, and possibly single-family detached-type units as well. These are all multifamily, but the project does offer, you know, a range of options. If you drove by, it'll look like different unit types. Additionally, the affordable housing commitment will ensure diversity of income levels within the community. And then there is design. Working with the neighbors, we've really laid out a project that will provide gradual transition in terms of massing from the existing community to the north. We have set up essentially three zones in the project. In the very north section, closest to Culpeper, height is limited to no more than 35 feet, and the units are limited to either townhome or detached-type multifamily units. Just beyond that section, the middle section allows heights of up to 50 feet. And finally, the third section allows heights up to 65 feet. We've committed to the offset between the northern and southern access points. We've committed to various calming, traffic calming measures throughout the project, and also traffic calming measures within existing Culpeper. And we've committed to parallel parking, road striping, road narrowing, crosswalks, and more. We also have committed to some off-site sidewalk and right-of-way dedication. I think the project comes together beautifully to balance perhaps competing interests of existing communities and growth management. It offers dense, or it offers a dense residential community, the design of which has been shaped heavily by our neighbors and community stakeholders. I think this is a project which the city can be proud of, we certainly are. And our team is available to answer any questions you may have. We thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't have any other cards signed up for this one. No, I'm sorry, yes, I do. There is, yeah, Rajanesh Patel online. All right, do you see, you have them. Rajanesh, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
Welcome. Thanks for joining us virtually. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Should be quick. We live in 5312 Farrington Road, which is immediately adjacent to the area that is currently under review. And we are very happy to move into this place. We only moved in January of this year. Got this place over from Stan Eskridge, who lived here for 40 years. The primary concern or a question we had and a request to the developers is as we, as our property opens up on the west side of the Farrington Road, and it's immediately adjacent to the zoning area now, there is a road safety risk we see as we exit the property, because it's only a two-lane road. So we wanted to know, we saw the plan that there is an egress and a buffer lane planned for the new property that's being developed. Our request would be to extend that so that there is an egress and slow zone or a slowing zone in front of the driveway for our property. That was one question. The second was, our driveway is pretty long from Farrington Road coming in, and it's absolutely adjacent to the new development. So we wanted to know how the offset would be in terms of the fence line that the new property would be having, because it's just our family living here. So we're just concerned about how far that fence line would be. And then the third question was coming in on the southwestern corner. I think Neil Gosh just now talked about saving a lot of the mature trees, and a lot of that area has a slope to drain the rainwater. So we want to make sure that that part is, was considered as part of the design now. Mayor, so thank you for your time and attention to this.
Thank you. Did you want to respond to that?
So I was having a little bit of trouble following along with some of the requests. I think I know where this house is. It's a single-family home that's set pretty far off of Farrington Road, yeah. And it's like near that pond on the, yeah. So, okay, just start, he started with the southwest corner of the property. That was one thing that he mentioned, and there being mature trees. I actually think that is a section where we have some trees saved because that back area to the west is a stream. So that is where some of that tree save is specifically. I think he also was asking about the maybe setback or fence line on the property line. And actually, we're showing, I believe, a zero, a zero setback on the southern property line in that area. That is one way that the design works in this, on this piece of property, which I believe is in a compact neighborhood here. And then I don't, I'm not sure I can address the, the first one seemed related to the driveway location, and he was asking about having road improvements there? I'm not exactly sure what the question was, to be fair.
Mr. Rajanesh, are you still available?
Yes.
Could you, could you repeat your first question?
The first question was, the opening of our driveway is right on Farrington Road. And I saw that the plan has a slowdown or an egress to make a left into the new development. Our request was to see if that egress or slowing down zone could be extended further, because the Farrington Road has a bend with a lot of trees, and the traffic that is increasing or would increase because of the new development would create a fair amount of road safety issue for us from what we can see. We're no experts in road safety, but it can very well be that if the slow zone or the egress to make a left is not extended further to cover maybe 100 feet beyond the development, that would create a bit of an issue for us to exit into the Farrington Road.
Okay, having looked at the plans, I think what we're, what this gentleman is referring to is our plans do show that we are adding turn lanes in Farrington Road. Specifically, there is a left-hand northbound turn lane on Farrington Road. And I believe the question is whether we could extend that so that that taper goes beyond his property line, or his driveway, I should say. We have not evaluated the road to, like, I wouldn't be able to answer that question tonight. We just don't know. It's, we are following the recommendations in the TIA, and it's a little bit unclear whether there is sufficient right-of-way to actually accommodate that improvement in that location, which is a little bit different than, you know, if we were, let's say, developing that property, then we could actually adjust the right-of-way. But we can't, we're not in a position to make a commitment to extend that road improvement today.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Right, Councilmember Cook. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have any other sign-ups. At this time, I declared a public hearing, declared a public hearing closed and back before the council. Councilmember Cook.
Thank you. Just a couple of really quick questions, Mr. Gosh. So, do you have an idea of the, of whether and what units will be rent versus for sale? Is that something that you?
I think this is all be for sale, so this is a multifamily project. Ultimately, when it's developed, it's essentially going to be, all of the units are going to be on one tax parcel. It's just that some of the units will appear like single-family detached homes or townhomes rather than traditional stack-flat apartments. There will be those as well, but they are all considered multifamily units under the UDO.
Okay, because at the Planning Commission, you had mentioned, I'm going to move into the affordability. You had mentioned that you thought that y'all would restrict the affordability units to the apartment styles as opposed to the other styles. Is that still the case?
Right, so we have, we have increased our affordable housing commitment. I think when we were looking at Planning Commission, we were looking at only the apartment style, stacked-flat apartment style. So we were at, I think, like 2% of the overall, or maybe less than that, of the overall units. And we have increased that commitment to being 5% of the overall units. So that's regardless of the type of unit. 5% of the overall units would be subject to that affordability commitment.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
I have a question for staff about what the, it made sense to me what the applicant said about not, not clear on the... This might be actually a bill question, because it's around transportation. Thank you, Erin, sorry. No, I'm good with that, thanks. Hi, just out of curiosity, so I hear what the applicant's saying about the not, not clear on the right-of-way, and would there even be space to taper, and I get all that. Is there a way to say if it is possible that they would do it? Is there a way to like phrase it in such a way that, that a commitment? Like, we get that technically it might not happen, like you literally may not be able to do it, but that there could be a way to phrase it so they could do it if it's, if it's, you know, meets the requirements? I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes, so I believe applicants have in the past proffered subject to the availability of right-of-way, so that if they can then later show that the right-of-way is not there that it would take, then they would not be required to make the commitment.
So I guess now my question is for the applicant, just out of curiosity, would you all be interested in adding that, that extra feat to, to think about this resident and his query with his comment?
Well, okay, I just want to clarify what the request is here, because I think that the gentleman we heard from, Mr. Patel, he was asking whether the taper could be extended. And I just want to clarify, my understanding is if the taper were extended, that wouldn't necessarily create any kind of left turn to his property, which is a different, you know, road, it's a different movement, I suppose. So I guess I would want some clarification on what we're talking about doing. And I think we're going to need a moment to discuss whether we can actually do that.
Yeah, and I understand it might not be possible, but I also understand that the resident saying, hey, if there's a benefit really close to me, it could potentially benefit his safety, and, and there is going to be more traffic, which I understand y'all are with your TIA solving, I mean, addressing, I should say. But, you know, if possible, let's try and do it. Thank you.
Go ahead, the Councilmember Baker.
Neil, do you want to, I asked you earlier about the green building. Do you have a response to that?
I do, yeah, and I, we spoke earlier, and then I was able to speak with our team. So we are able to make some commitments to green building, and if you'll just give me a moment. So one of them will be that we would provide a minimum of four EV parking spaces. And then the other one, it's very similar to the green building commitment that was on the South Miami Boulevard case earlier today. We were looking at that one. Essentially, it would be the project should be designed to meet the requirements for one of the following green building certifications, and then it lists many of them. LEED, Energy Star, BREAM, Green Globes, NGBS Green, or Green Guard. And then, we'd say, within 12 months of the issuance of the final certificate of compliance for the project, the developer shall demonstrate to the city that the building has been certified as a green building by providing a copy of the green building certification. We would be able to commit to both of those.
That's great, thank you. Let's see what else here. Oh, did you make a commitment to the schools donation to the schools?
We did, and then I noticed that it's not on there. It was in the amount of $64,500. We said that at Planning Commission, I'm going to put that on us. I don't think we ended up on our revised development plan, that commitment remains.
Okay, great. Let's see. Yeah, I think, I think this is going in the right direction, generally. I, this is a very large site, 20 acres. In an ideal world, I'd like to see some retail on the site. I'd like to know that there was going to be a commitment to walkable design and connectivity on the site. I know there's going to be the connection there. I know there's going to be the connection there. And framing buildings and the orientation of buildings such that it is, it is walkable. I'd love to see public park dedication, number of other things that I'd like to see. But until then, I do think that this is the right use in the right place. I appreciate the commitment to affordable housing for thirty years. I like the green building commitments, and there were a couple other pieces that I liked. So, so again, I think this is going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gosh, thanks for the presentation. And I agree with my councilmember Baker. Appreciate the, the additional commitment to affordability. The, actually, good catch on the, on the school commitment. That's appreciated as well as the green commitments. I often ask about the BPAC comments, since I'm the BPAC representative on the council. So I do want to ask about the one comment they had in here about, and I just want to make sure I understand that. So you're going to put a ten-foot shared-use path on the west side of Farrington, right?
Along our frontage, correct?
On your frontage, right. So the comment from BPAC was extend sidewalk on the west side of Farrington Road to connect to Rutgers Place.
Yep.
This will allow residents to walk to the transit stops and amenities on fifty-four. So is that, that's, is Rutgers, and I apologize.
It's half a mile of sidewalk offsite.
And going towards fifty-four? So it's off your, it's off your parcel?
It's way off the parcel, yeah. But I will, I will note, much of that section between our frontage and Rutgers is also being built by other developments already. So that, that distance is half a mile? I couldn't tell you exactly how many of that half-mile is already spoken for, but a lot of it is. There are some gaps in it, but those gaps are offsite.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah. No, that's what, I was trying to understand that, so I get that it's offsite for you all. I drove that, I drove down Farrington just last week, actually on the way to the, to the, to Hernan Park for the, for the International Soccer Tournament. So you're right, that those sidewalks are filling in, and we hope to soon see sidewalks along that whole, whole stretch of Farrington. So appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
All right. I, well, I'm not going to support this case. Just joking. I don't have any questions. Colleagues, any other questions? Yes.
I just want to make one statement, which is, well, actually two. The first one is, I watched the Planning Commission, as you all know I do, and there were a lot of residents that came with a lot of issues. And I'm glad to see that you've continued having those meetings and that those folks are not here tonight. I think that's, oh, they are here. You didn't speak in opposition. Let me rephrase. You did not speak in opposition tonight. There was a, and y'all did an excellent job, by the way. They had a slideshow presentation, they had an order. It was very impressive. But I just want to say that they did not speak tonight. That leads me to believe that at least a lot of their concerns have been addressed, and I think that that's a real positive. So that's something that I'm paying attention to, and I just wanted to state that. The other thing that I want to say is that it would be really nice if the projects that come before the Planning Commission had, they were really like the best you could do at that time. I think that y'all knew, there was conversation about the affordability aspect and the less than two percent. I think y'all knew that that wasn't where you were going to end up. And for me, it's important that I get the expertise of my Planning Commission on a project that feels at least close to complete as opposed to this idea that, like, we'll make a lot of changes in between Planning Commission and coming to council. So that's just something that I want to recognize. I think this one was particularly surprising because Morningstar is in front of us all the time. Y'all kind of know where we're going in the expectation in that department, and certainly eight units out of four hundred and fifteen was, yeah, not a great offer. So anyway, that's, just wanted to make those two comments. But I do appreciate the, the project that's come before us. I do think it's better, and, and I hope that we continue getting those that are listening to community input and getting better and better as they go along. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, colleagues, for your comments. Thank you all for bringing the application forward at this time. I will entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Farrington Road Multifamily. I'm sorry. Oh.
If I could just, Neil, make sure I confirm what I heard in terms of the additional commitments.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Four EV parking spaces?
Minimum, yep.
Minimum, four EV parking spaces, a green building certification?
Yes.
And sixty-four thousand dollars to Durham, sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars to Durham Public Schools?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to confirm that.
You got it. Thank you for capturing that.
I was curious about my query. Sorry. Is there any?
So, I don't think it's a commitment we're going to be able to make tonight with the design, just right here on the floor. Looking at it, it looks like there could be some potential issues with spacing between that guy's driveway and where our site is. Generally speaking, that spacing would be further for like a, let's say, a commercial driveway to commercial driveway. So to provide, for us to commit to provide an accommodation for a personal driveway in, just looking at it here on the floor, we're not sure that it's going to meet the right spacing requirement and that there could be a safety issue with, like, rear-end collisions because people are not expecting that turn. They're expecting the turn at our site. So I don't think we are comfortable making that commitment tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing Farrington Road Multifamily into the city of Durham and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Northwood Raven LLC.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, could you open the vote? Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll also entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of Residential Suburban Twenty, Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District B.
So moved.
And Major Transportation Corridor Overlay I forty, county jurisdiction, and establishing the same as Planned Development Residential two-one-point-two-two-nine, Falls Jordan Watershed Protection Overlay District B, and Major Transportation Corridor Overlay I forty, city jurisdiction.
Moved as read. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute, section one-sixty-D dash six-zero-five.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. That, I feel like I'm experiencing a glitch in the matrix right now. I'm so tired. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right. Colleagues, thank you all so much. In closing, Bill Nye, the Science Guy, said hello. And what many of us probably did not know, his roots are in Durham. His mom lives in Durham, his nephew, family all in Durham. So Bill Nye was here today, and he said hello, and I was able to welcome him home. All right, that's it. Thank you all so much. Good night.